Call the Board of Supervisors in the session for the March 14th, 2022 meeting. We'll start with public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Individuals wishing to comment on a public hearing will be given the opportunity during that respective hearing. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to speak to the board? Have no one in chambers? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
There's nobody on Zoom that wishes to speak.
Moving forward to go to proclamations. There are no proclamations for approval at this meeting. Next, we'll have the approval of the minutes of the meetings of the March 3rd, 2022 Canvas of Votes and the March 7th, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. Everyone have a chance to review the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 3rd and March 7th.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of March 3rd and March 7th. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Curious. Next, we have consent items. All we have there is a Fillmore Class LC liquor license.
Motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the Fillmore Class LC liquor license. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. There are no procurement procedures for approval. Public hearings, we have the proof of publication for public hearing today on zoning issues.
I'll make a motion to approve the proof of publication for the zoning amendments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. First on the agenda will be zoning case ZC hashtag 02-03-22 Joseph A. Demmer Trust, A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential. For context, we have our zoning administrator, Tammy Henry.
Good morning. The applicant is requesting rezon from A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential 4.2 acres to allow them to separate the existing farm home and buildings to sell to a relative to continue in the family farming operation. This property is located 1.32 miles south of the city of Piazza along Pilot Grove Road and is legally described as the southwest of the northeast and the northwest-southeast lying north of the road, Section 20, T88 North, R1E Vernon Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by Joseph A. Demmer Trust. Zoning in the area includes A1 agricultural to the north, the south, and the east. There are no previous zoning cases attached to this property and there are no special use permits attached to this property. Five rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners and the city of Piazza was notified. Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 9 Agriculture and Natural Resources, Page 134, Objective 3.1, and Chapter 8 Housing, Page 122, Objective 12.7 may apply to this case. So this is a situation where he's selling it off to a family member and the intent is to have them start getting into this farming operation.
Do we have any questions from the board?
Tammy, this is Ann. Good morning. What was the result at the zoning board?
We had six members present and it was in favor, six to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now in public hearing. Do we have anyone wishing to address the board either for or against the case? I have no one in chambers?
I have no questions or comments on Zoom.
Good.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I will second that.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Make a motion. Is there something at the board level?
No, I was just seeing if you had any more questions for Tammy or anything.
I do not.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 I'll make a motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the requirements. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Make a motion that the amendment be adopted or the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second. The motion that the amendment be adopted, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Move to the next zoning case. It'd be ZC hashtag 02-04-22 Edwin and Rose Marie Horstfield and Nicholas and Ellie Wegman, A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential. Tammy?
The applicant is requesting rezon from A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential 2.43 acres to allow for the construction of a new home on the farm so they can continue to assist in the family farming operation. This property is located 1.34 miles southeast of the city of Eppert along Placid Road and is legally described as the southwest of the southeast, Section 23, T88 North, R1W Taylor Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. This property is owned by Edwin and Rose Marie Horstfield and Nicholas and Ellie Wegman. Zoning in the area includes A1 agricultural to the north, the south, the east, and the west, A2 agricultural residential to the north. The A2 agricultural residential to the north was on zoning case number 0417 of 18 and it was allowed to be a survey of two existing homes on the farm to allow for the construction of a new home. This will be the first home on this property. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. There are no special use permits attached to this property. Four rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners and the city of Eppert was notified. Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 9 Agriculture and Natural Resources, Page 134, Objective 3.1, and Chapter 8 Housing, Page 122, Objective 12.7 may apply to this case. So if you'll look in the picture that's up there, the farm up to the north currently has two homes on it. Your next case is related to this as well. The two brothers are coming in and building two new homes and tearing down those homes. So there will not be any more homes than what's there now. They'll be on two different parcels in the future. The other old farm homes are going to be torn down.
Tammy, was there discussion at the zoning board?
Yes, and it was six and zero in favor of it as long as the two old farmhouses are removed.
So are the stipulations then their part, are they written?
Yes, yes. So their condition will be the same as any of our A2s. So on the pieces, there will be no more than two homes on a total of 80 acres. So it's locking up the property that there'll be no more than two homes and the existing farmhouses will be removed. Was that your question, Ann?
Right, I'm just making sure that that's in writing somewhere and not lost.
Yes, it is. And when we do the permit, to give them permission to build the home, it will be saying that the existing homes have to be torn down 90 days after the construction of the new home and we do go check those.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now in public hearing. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to speak for or against the zoning issue? Have no one in chambers? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
If there is anybody on Zoom, please raise your hand or wave your arms or get a gentleman turn his camera on. It does not appear as though we have anybody on Zoom.
We're motion to close the public hearing.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further questions from the board?
I'll vote. Close the public hearing? Normally do that.
Sorry. Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry. Do we have any further questions from the board on the zoning issue?
I do not have any.
Or do I? I will make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 I'll make a motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the requirements. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 I'll make a motion that the amendment be adopted and the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
Second.
Motion and a second that the amendment be adopted. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll move to the next zoning case, which is zoning case hashtag 02-05-22 Edwin and Rose Marie Horstfield and Nicholas and Ellie Wegman and Josh Wegman, A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural. Tammy?
Again, this is the follow-up case to the one I just talked about. The applicant is requesting rezon from A1 agriculture to A2 agricultural residential 2.03 acres to be allowed to tear down the existing farm homes and build a new home to continue to assist in the family farming operation. This property is located 1.14 miles southeast of the city of Eppert along Placid Road and is legally described as part of the northwest of the southeast, Section 23, T88 North, R1W Taylor Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by Edwin and Rose Marie Horstfield and Nicholas and Ellie Wegman. Zoning in the area includes A1 agriculture to the north, the south, the east, and west, A2 agricultural residential to the north. The A2 agricultural residential to the north was on zoning case 0417 of 18, was to be allowed to survey off two existing homes on the farm to allow for the construction of a new home. The applicant wants to build a new home on the property and plans to tear down the two existing homes. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. There are no special use permits attached to the property. Four rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners and the city of Eppert was notified. Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 9 Agriculture and Natural Resources, Page 134, Objective 3.1, and Chapter 8 Housing, Page 122, Objective 12.7 may apply to this case. Again, this is a follow-up and as you can see on this, you'll see where the two existing homes sit on this parcel. They will be removed and that will be the area for the new home. And this again was in favor. There were six members present. It was six to zero.
Okay, thank you, Tammy.
A motion to open the public hearing.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have anyone in chambers? We are in open session. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to speak to the board regarding the zoning case? You have no one in chambers? Kevin?
Nobody is indicating on Zoom.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 I have no further questions.
Or do I?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the requirements. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Motion that the amendment be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second that the amendment be adopted. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Curious. Moving to the next, the zoning case hashtag 02-06-22 Wilford and Darlene Vorwald Families Living Trust and Danita Grant slash DB&amp;T Bank, A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural. Tammy?
The applicant is requesting rezon from A1 agriculture to A2 agricultural residential 4.95 acres to be allowed to sell the existing farmhouse and building site to a prior, the sale of the crop ground. The property is located 1.12 miles northwest of the city of Farley along Route 20 and is legally described as John Bergfeld's Farm in Sections 2 and 3, T88 North, R2W Dodge Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. This property is owned by Wilford and Darlene Vorwald Family Living Trust and Danita Grant with Dubuque Bank and Trust. Zoning in the area includes A1 agriculture to the north, the south, the east, and the west, the A2 agricultural residential to the south, and R1 rural residential to the north. The A2 agricultural residential to the south was on zoning case number 1135 of 15 and that was to allow an existing farm home to be separated to the farm ground for estate purposes. The R1 rural residential to the north on zoning case number 12 of 06 was to allow for one single family home with the condition that only one home can be allowed on the five acre lot. They then reapplied on zoning case number 720 of 06 to allow for additional five acres to be added to the parcel with a total of 10 acres rezoned conditionally for one home only. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. There are no special use permits attached to the property. Eight rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners and the city of Farley was notified. Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 9 Agriculture and Natural Resources, Page 134, Objective 3.1, and Chapter 8 Housing, Page 122, Objective 12.7 may apply to this case. So the family is selling off the farm and the bank is involved. It's an estate situation where there is a family member that's interested in buying the 4.95 acres and then it sounds as if the rest of the crop ground will be sold to an adjacent neighbor.
Tammy, this is Ann. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So obviously I'd like to know the result of the zoning board.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ann, six to zero in favor.
Typically, we see the A1 to A2 to continue the farming relationship, which is probably how they previously got this rezoned, maybe initially. This is, has nothing to do with continuing agriculture because as stated on the application, they intend to sell the farm land. Can you address that?
Yeah, so this has not been rezoned, first of all, Ann. This is the first rezoning. That other rezoning that we were talking about was a previous case in a different area. So this is, there is a family member that is going to purchase this and then continue farming a small version of a small farm. They're going to take down a lot of the old outbuildings and rebuild them. And so the balance of the property will maintain in farming use as agricultural, but there's a family member that's going to try to just do small farming on this five, this almost five acres. And it was because of the, as you can see, the existing layout, that's why the five acres was taken in.
Then my next question concerns Danita Grant, which is the bank. What authority does she have to do this? She's the applicant. I don't understand why the bank is the applicant.
Because the bank is in control of the trust. The family has placed the bank in control of the trust.
And what, I guess maybe we'll have to have Dave Schneider tell us this, but what documentation did you get typically? I mean, is she, did she give you something as a trust officer? Did this go through CJ? I mean, we don't usually have banks apply.
That's correct. No, we did not go through CJ. And there is a document that shows, and I'm trying to find it here, there is a document that shows she's in charge of the trust. So the family was having trouble agreeing and the property, the estate needs to be closed and so that is why the family set her up in charge of the trust. I don't know if Dave, if you're on there, if you have something else you want to add to that?
Yes, I can. Basically, I was contacted directly by the bank. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Dave. Thank you.
Yeah, Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Surveying, 906 First Street North, Farley, Iowa. Basically, we were contacted by the bank with the understanding that this property was in a trust. One of the, one of the family members, one of the kids, were the trustee of the trust, but they were not getting the property dispersed as they were supposed to and were ultimately sued by the rest of the family. The court actually gave DB&amp;T Trust Department control of the sale of, or basically the authority to disperse of this property with the understanding that there was a family member that wanted to own the building site and the remainder of it, and I'm assuming they've got some kind of agreement as to price on that. I guess I did not get involved in that. But ultimately, the bank is responsible for auctioning off, finding a realtor in some form to disperse of the rest of the crop ground. And until we get the acreage split out of here and the plat's filed on this thing, they're kind of on hold. So we're basically working with the banks on the, you know, as dictated by the court.
Right, I guess what I'm missing is something that there's proof that all that you've just said is true, other than just, you know, people talking about it.
I believe we did provide that, correct, Tammy?
Yeah, I'm trying to find it here. Should be in the packet.
I'll start flipping through my file as well.
That is the document that they signed. And then there is another, I just don't have it in here.
Do you have, do you have the email?
Obviously not in front of me right now, Dave.
So this is being lot two and lot one is the 223 acres?
Yes, yes.
Just makes me nervous that this has already been through the courts, apparently, and it's, there's a dispute. We haven't involved our county attorney to make sure that we're processing it correctly inside the zoning department.
I just have to get it here for you.
Keep talking to documentation from the courts, right?
Yes, yes. We were emailed, we were emailed the, basically the documentation from the courts saying what they had to do to disperse of this ground.
John Nemmers, is he on?
We're going through our emails here right now, trying to find that.
Is the county, is the county attorney present?
No, he's not unless he's on Zoom.
My understanding is that the...
Want to go to public, you want to go to public hearing or?
Yeah, let's move to public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to open public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 John Nemmers with Dubuque. Okay.
I'm John Nemmers with Dubuque Bank and Trust and I've taken over this account from Danita Grant, who's no longer with DB&amp;T. So I'm not as familiar with the account as I'd like to be, but my understanding is that Dubuque Bank and Trust was appointed as the trustee by the court after one of the kids was removed as trustee. So there should be a court order out there. I didn't bring the file with me, though. I apologize.
Yes, here it is.
Okay. Hang on one second.
Hi, this is Amy at the zoning office. I think I found it. Can I share my screen?
Sure. Thank you, Jen.
That's giving her the right.
Go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't know, it doesn't seem like it's letting me. Wait, maybe it is now here.
Get ready to pull up.
You have an open mic as well.
There you go. Thank you, Amy. You're welcome. And there's a second page here.
Did you get to see that, Ann, or?
I saw, I mean, a couple of sentences in the caption. Again, is there harm in having CJ May look at this?
I don't think there's any harm. I don't know if there's any need either.
I'm comfortable with the court order, given DB&amp;T the basically control of the property to move along the estate.
I understand and I would be too if that was the case. I mean, that's all I'm asking. This is unusual and the continuity is not the same with Danita not being present and not, I don't, I mean, John, good morning, it's going to see John Nemmers. That's all I'm asking is that we put this through the correct procedural basis.
Good, Jen.
Yes, Danita is no longer with the bank. She's in another position, so I'm the representative on the account for DB&amp;T, so Danita can't be here this morning. But we would like to move this along because we have to do this before we can sell the agricultural ground and we'd like to do that with the planting season coming up, we'd like to do that as soon as possible. So we are on a tight timeline to get the rezoning done and the properties listed for sale.
Okay, understandable.
And we do have it here and I know we sent that, I believe we sent that along to the county, but it is in the Iowa District Court in and for Dubuque County related to the Vorwald Family Living Trust, the stipulation, it's a probate number 01311 TRP RO 52675, basically describing exactly what the authority is and why they're transferring this to the bank.
And Dave, Amy found that and they did share that on the screen.
What came through on the screen, Tammy, was a couple of sentences. It wasn't a copy of anything. So that's, I mean, that's fine, we can proceed, but I don't want it to be that if that was a copy of the court order, it was just a copy of some captions. So that's fine. My colleagues are ready to proceed. That's great.
Okay, could Amy put that back up again?
Go ahead, Amy.
You want me to go to the next page?
Just keep moving it down like you are, Amy.
Next page.
I saw DBNT mentioned twice, and, uh, I believe we're only re-changing the zoning, right? This isn't a sale, we're not transferring property of this procedure. We're just changing the zoning, right?
Correct.
Seems pretty straightforward. Seems like everything's in order. Um, I'll make a motion. Anyway, we're still in closed session.
Yeah, yeah, we have to.
Okay, so that's most my comments. I have no further questions or comments.
Do you have anything?
Well, this is just a case I would have expected the county attorney to be involved in. That's all. I mean, it doesn't make it fatal. It's just that it's awkward and difficult when we're interpreting on the fly legal documents. That's when you get the county attorney involved, when there's been family members who don't get along well enough that they sue each other and end up in just in probate court. So that's all. That's the end of my comment.
We're still in open meeting, I believe.
The good news is, this is a public hearing. Good news is, these documents were available to the public and, uh, uh, all that work for the county would have access to them. Including the public. Um, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion to second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Any further discussion?
I have nothing further, no.
I have nothing further.
Do you have anyone wishing to make a motion? We have no one wishing to make a motion on this?
I was, are we done? Does there any more dialogue?
No, I, I don't have anything. Do you have anything further?
No, no, I do not.
Wes McDonough, or not?
I said no.
She didn't have anything.
I did not hear.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Second.
Have a motion to second to re, approve the rezoning. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 I'll make a motion to suspend the requirements that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second.
Have a motion to second to suspend the requirements. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 I'll make a motion that the amendment be adopted, that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map, and that it ought to be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment. And portion of the official zoning map is amended in the official county newspaper as required by law.
Second.
Have a motion to second that the amendment be adopted. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Case passes. Next, we'll go to zoning case hashtag one, zero, dash, two, one, dash, two, one, chapter one, zoning ordinance amendments. Tammy?
All right, so we're back in front of you with the solar ordinance. And so I'll read in where we're at with that, okay? Dubuque County Zoning Board has requested that the staff research ordinances across Iowa related to solar electric generating systems. Staff have looked at a number of solar energy ordinances since last summer. All of the ordinances in eastern Iowa are modeled closely from an ordinance adopted in Lynn County around 2015. Staff had discussions with our county zoning administrators, utility officials, and solar industry representatives. When zoning board first recommended the ordinance to, to the supervisors for approval, the supervisors asked that the zoning board have some additional concert, con- conversation, excuse me, with solar system providers. The zoning staff and Ed Raiber had, uh, had those additional conversations. The zoning board discussed proposed changes to the ordinance accept and accepted them. The zoning board unanimously approved to recommend the ordinance on to the board of supervisors. There were a few changes that have been incorporated into the ordinance based on the recommendation of the zoning board. An alternative sort of solar collection system, a concentrating solar power system, is not permitted under this ordinance. Those systems are primarily used in extreme remote areas without a nearby power grid. This is not what the ordinance is designed to address and is not applicable to Dubuque County. Utility connections for what, for how wiring and electrical connections are made into and throughout the solar array were upda- updated to reflect how they are installed in an actual practice. For the most part, the Dubuque County's ordinance regulates the use of property rather than the scale or size of the concerned use, other than how it relates to property in line and setbacks. Dubuque County does not have a building code. Staff understands that the term utility scale solar may leave some room for interpretation and possible confusion. The draft ordinance has the following definitions that were updated to the proposed recommended, recommended ordinances. The descriptor utility scale ordinance, or solar, I'm sorry, was changed to commercial solar energy systems. This reflects that the ordinance is intended to regulate solar arrays whose primary purpose is wholesale or retail sale or generated electricity. The descriptor for residential scale solar was changed to consumer solar energy system. This reflects the system regarding the size of the primary intent to the offset electricity for the owner and not to intend to, um, to beat up the annual generators of, uh, electricity. This could be residential, agricultural, commercial business, or building, or public buildings. It is noteworthy that even if a consumer solar energy systems are unregulated in their design or layout of this ordinance, there are always in which, uh, which a way they may be regulated. If a solar array for a consumer system is on the ground, setbacks restrictions will apply as if they were outbuildings. Other regulations from state or the grid network may also apply to both consumer and commercial solar energies. The action requested by the zoning commission was the approval of the solar ordinance, and it was recommended by the zoning board. There were six members present, and it was in favor of six to zero. We had much discussion. We had, um, uh, one of our solar, uh, uh, energy, uh, builders was there and had much discussion with him. He offered information. That's where some of the little minor changes came in. And, uh, again, we're asking that this get approved, so Dubuque County can actually have a, um, usable solar ordinance.
Tammy, it's Anne, did the, uh, did the final draft of this ordinance, did you reach out and present that to the, uh, the, the same person?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
And we've had several public hearings, and we discussed that, and, and again, Ed Raiber has been, uh, instrumental in helping us get this through and connecting to the right people.
Okay. Jay, do you have anything?
I do not.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Have a motion.
I'll, I'll second that.
Have a motion to second open a public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. We are now in public hearing. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board on the zoning ordinance amendment? Have no one in chambers wishing to address the board? How about on Zoom?
Uh, nobody on Zoom is indicating they wish to speak.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Anne, I will second that.
Have a motion to second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Back to discussion. Anne, do you have anything further?
Well, I guess I'd like to ask my colleagues, you know, we, we can, um, as we do with most zoning changes, we can suspend the rules, um, or we can go through the, um, second, third readings. I'm just wondering what, what my colleagues want to do.
Jay?
Uh, we don't modify the ordinances too often. Um, and I didn't see much public participation today related to this issue. Uh, but it did appear that we've had good public participation related to both the public and private sector, and the zoning board was very well-vetted and familiar with this issue. Is my assumptions. So based upon that, if those, if everyone feels those are close to true, I don't see need to go through multiple meetings and multiple readings.
Yeah, this has been, I think, I would agree with Jay. This has been up and, this has been before, before and sent back. So it's been published several times as well.
Yeah, we've been working on it for over a year.
No, I appreciate that, Tammy. This has been something that I've asked you to look at, and I appreciate it. It's coming to, um, closure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you have anything?
Yeah, this is, uh, Auditor Dragato. Waiving the second, third reading would actually benefit our timetable as well, to being able to include it into the, uh, uh, current zoning ordinance, which I would like to publish all in one fell swoop, so that would actually save some time and money.
Okay, it sounds like everyone is agreeable to waiving the second, third readings on that, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of the zoning ordinance, uh, relating to solar energy.
Are we still in public hearing, or do we close that?
I think we closed.
Okay, awesome. I will second that.
Have a motion in the second to approve the zoning change. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Make a motion to suspend the requirement that this ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
And I will second that.
Have a motion in the second to suspend requirements. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 I'll make a motion that the ordinance be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to.
We won't really change the maps in this one.
Correct. So I don't know, is there anything, let me just withdraw that. Is there anything you'll need to do, Tammy? Or should we just have the auditor arrange for publication?
Auditor. Yeah, auditor will arrange for publication.
I will second that if that's a motion or a question.
Well, it's a question, it's a question right now. I just want to make sure we have the proper form of the motion. I'll make a motion that the ordinance, um, be, well, I guess it's adopted. So I'll make a motion that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the ordinance. And the official county newspapers.
And I will second that.
Have a motion in a second. To, uh, prove the publication of the new ordinance. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. That carries.
Thank you, everyone, for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thanks, Tammy. Good job.
Kevin. Thank you, Dave. Moving forward, there are no Platts for approval at this meeting. Uh, moving to the action items, we have a resolution to approve the hiring of deputies, assistants, and clerks.
Motion to approve your resolution.
I will second that.
Have a motion in a second to approve the resolution. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye, carries. Next, we have a resolution to approve the necessary documents with Mathi Construction doing business as River City Paving for the HMA paving culverts, revetment, and shoulder widening on Old Massey Road Project. LOST dash twenty-three parentheses, one, dash, seven, three, dash, three, one.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the documents with Mathi. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have a resolution to approve the necessary documents with Mathi Construction doing business as River City Pa- paving for the HMA reservicing and pipe culverts on Rockville Road, Old Worthington Road, and Old Farley Road. Project LFM dash P two, three, parentheses, three, dash, seven, X, dash, three, one.
A motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
Have a motion in a second to approve the documents with Mathi. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Resolution carries. Next, we have a resolution to approve the federal aid funding agreement. Hashtag six, dash, twenty-two, dash, build, dash, zero, zero, five for project HDP dash C, z- zero, three, one, parentheses, one, one, zero, dash, six, B, dash, three, one. Grade and improvements to the Northwest Arterial D ten South John Deere Road Build Grant. Do you have Anthony on for context?
Yeah, good morning. Um, so just, yeah, a quick little context to this. Um, so we're gonna have a couple agreements on the agenda, agenda today. The first one here is with the, uh, the Iowa DOT for the federal aid agreement, uh, for this John Deere Bill Grant project. It just specifically spells out, um, that eighty percent of the funding will be through the federal bill grant funds, and twenty percent will be our local match. Um, so it's just our typical federal aid agreement that we've, we've done in the past on federal aid projects. Um, but specifically, this is through the Iowa DOT, and I'd recommend this.
Good. Thank you, Anthony. Any questions from the board?
For me?
No, I have none.
I will make a motion to approve the federal aid funding agreement.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the federal aid funding agreement. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries. Next, we have a resolution to approve the necessary documents for cycle media. Service change order number two. I believe there was just minor, uh, spelling change and, uh, figures that needed.
And a mileage adjustment, so.
Pardon?
Uh, spelling change and a mileage adjustment.
Motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
Have a motion in a second to approve the documents for cycle media. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye, carries. Next, we have a resolution to approve the collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local One Twenty representing representing the administrative sheriff's deputies. Don, do you have context for that?
Yes, this is the, um, union contract for sixteen members of the administrative, um, sheriff's deputies. This is for the current year that we're in. Um, as you recall, we were taking the steps to go take this, um, agreement to arbitration in October. Um, the union did reach out to us two weeks prior to that and withdrew their offer, uh, or withdrew their, um, last offer to us, which in, which were, they were seeking, uh, one time two hundred, or two thousand, five hundred dollar, um, bonus payment. And so the only thing that this contract has, um, updated in it from the previous contract is that we added a physical agility incentive, which will allow them to, um, have it a wellness day if they participate in several running events, community running events. And so that was recommended, um, by the sheriff, and that is, um, what is presented before you today.
Thank you, Don. Any questions from the board?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
Um, so one, I did read that, uh, provision related to the, I think, greater than five K, uh, event, so I thought that was very unique and innovative, and definitely would, would support that. Um, how many employees are covered under this?
There are sixteen.
Sixteen, okay. And then traditionally, the origin of this agreement, uh, the wage follows the, um, elected official, the sheriff in this case, which comes from the comp board's wage increases that.
That is correct. Every member's wage in this contract is a percentage of the sheriff's wage.
Okay, and as far as you've been here, that kind of has followed.
That is correct.
That's followed each and every year. Um, and so maybe another question I had is, for this year, I'm kind of twisting things up. For this year, non-professional, um, not, non-bargaining, professional employees, did the board authorize a five percent wage increase?
Or FY, the current one that we're in, I believe.
Actually, not the current one, coming up.
The one we're in, yeah, it, what's in the budget that was, um, approved by the board, or will be approved by the board is five percent.
Is five percent, okay. That, that's what I thought. And so, and the percentage on this contract would be?
For FY twenty-three.
Uh, for the, this contract, if we prove it and sign it, the percentage of wage increase will be?
This one is, was six per, six and a half percent.
Six point five percent from the previous year.
From the previous year.
Okay, all right. Um, that's what I thought. That's, that's the last of my, my questions. I don't know if anyone else has any other questions, but I have a couple other comments.
No, it's, uh, this got delayed, obviously, with the COVID and everything. Should have actually been approved last July, so.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're in negotiations for FY twenty-three right now, too.
The change is basically mirroring, mirroring the deputy's contract. The deputies already have that in their contract for the running events. Anne, do you have anything?
Well, I think we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that this is delayed because we wouldn't accept all of the demands that were made during negotiation, and they wanted to go to arbitration. And that the arbitration request then was withdrawn. So, you know, this is just how the process works. And, um, I'm glad to see that it's concluded.
Yeah, I'm certainly happy to, to come to resolution with, with the unions. Um, you know, I think being delayed probably worked in their advantage with inflation and wage inflation related to percentages, and having the board just approve a, a five percent, and the board approve up to fifteen percent for the sheriff next year. And that's kind of my concern, is that pattern continues to escalate. So, you know, three years back, it was three percent. I supported that at the comp board, went to six and a half. Actually voted against that one, and this upcoming year is fifteen percent. I voted against that one as well. Um, I'll be voting in favor. Um, I'll be voting in favor of this because it's it's close to the five percent for, you know, professional non-bargaining. Um, still a little higher than I would like, but it would caution the board to just following the compensation board's recommendation. Which is state code and now tied to a union contract. Okay, I don't think that's what the state intended. And I think it's 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 very good language for the union and the Teamsters, and they should be applauded for that connection when it works for them. Uh, there were other times which I've been told is that it didn't work for them, that when when the compensation board or the supervisors came back with zero or one, two percent. You know, real modest increases uh in the past, not during my terms. Um, well, possibly in the first one or two years of my terms, uh. Um, the board was at that, but I would, uh, you know, six point five percent is a good, healthy increase. Uh, but I would caution ourselves of setting a precedent that next year it has to be fifteen percent. That, you know, that's not decided, but uh that's what I'm concerned about.
Anne, do you have anything further?
No.
Be looking for a motion then to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the collective bargaining agreement. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Here is. And next, we have the resolution to authorize the chair to sign the mortgage release and release from deed restrictions. From SEIR PC, which is uh the thing we have been dealing with uh. Due to the flooding. Correct, Kevin? Don? South or Ed, do you have the context on that?
This is Ed Braber. The Southeast Iowa Regional Planning uh Commission. I don't think they abbreviate it as a word like uh like ECIA does, but they um had another project. Uh, that had been enrolled in that uh program where the uh Dubuque County serves as the fiscal agent for a lot of projects in all of Eastern Iowa. This particular one is coming before you because uh the entity that initially entered into this arrangement. Is selling it to another uh another entity. It's a, I believe, a school that was converted to apartments. So this is just uh recognizing that mortgage release um in um the material in your packet was prepared by one of the uh staff planners. At Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission, and they're um looking to move forward with this with a mortgage release. And recognizing a release from some of the uh 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 program requirements that the initial owner had entered into. So if you have any questions, let me know.
We were just the fiscal agent for.
Right, right.
Any question?
No, motion to approve the resolution.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to authorize the chair to sign B one nine IA Northwest Arterial John Deere. Road Final Grant Agreement. Anthony.
Yeah, good morning. And um so this came on us pretty quickly uh on Friday. I I was emailed by Michael Keane of Federal Highway Administration. To um uh pushes the agreement forward uh for approval and it it. His words are that this needs to be turned around pretty quickly to to keep the uh the project um in the process or in schedule with the with the with the project letting. So he needs it back by tomorrow morning to be able to be vetted through the DOT and then ultimately through his office for for final signature. So this is um, you know, a little bit out of order how we typically do things, but um appreciate the daughter's office for stepping in and really help us put this resolution together and uh get this on the agenda. Any questions on this?
It just deals with the John Deere Build Grant, correct? That's all it is.
Correct. It's, yeah, it's it's fairly similar to the uh DOT agreement that we that you guys just approved. Um, this actually went through a quite a vetting process with Federal Highway in Washington DC. Uh, the OST office. Um, we went back and forth a lot on these corrections. There's very specific language that needs to be spelled out in the in the in the contract or in the agreement to um. You know, for us to be funded for this project. Uh, so I I would say it's been heavily, heavily vetted um from from the Fed's point of view. And uh this just basically spells out what the project is and what it can't be and what the what the funding is.
Anthony, this is Supervisor Wickham. Um, these federal programs sometimes get a little confusing. Um, like my question is the on the local funds, you've got the three point six million from the city of Dubuque and then eighty-eight thousand from Dubuque County. Can you describe what use, if possible, um those funds are going towards?
Yeah, the uh the the five point four million dollars is going towards the John Deere roads, which is the the build grant, bill grant amount. And then the um, we have the other state funds and local funds are the base of the Northwest Arterial portion uh for the for what the city is completing. Um, they're they're helping to put that towards the match on this project. So five point four is going to cover the 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 cost on on the the John Deere bill grant area.
And then just the breakout of the city versus the county, um trying to figure out the rhyme or reason of those numbers, is there?
Sure.
Why are we on? Why is it stated that it's eighty-eight thousand for the county?
Um, let's see here. It it eighty-eight thousand dollars is, I think, the remainder that um as as far as compared to the total project costs is what's what we're responsible for. But that is being picked up um kind of cost shared through our our STBG grant, STBG grant amounts as well. So it's not actual, as I understand, it's not actual local dollars is coming out of our account.
Okay, thank you.
Anthony, this is Anne, and um I appreciate that you're bringing this to us quickly. Uh, you and I have been working on this. I've been listening and learning behind you. Um, for years on this, and when they uh ask us for a quick turnaround um through the iterations as this is taken, I think it's. It's time to to get this done so we can get out for bid. So I'll make a motion to approve this resolution.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Thank you.
We just need to get it together.
Jesus, this is hot off the press. Wow.
As soon as it's done. Okay, next we'll uh. Go to Communications, Dubuque Metropolitan Area Solid Waste Agency FY twenty-one Financial Statement. Receiving file from I Bailey, the audit for the landfill.
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
I'll second your motion.
Have a motion and a second to receive and file. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Move to appointments. Open vacancies for information only. Moving on, we'll go to number ten, which is most to approve the personnel requisition. For part-time clerk four in the auditor's office. Auditor Drogado, for context.
Good morning, everybody. This is a uh position that has been vacant in our office since about the beginning of the year. Our employee transferred down to the recorder's office. Uh, it was a permanent full-time clerk three. I'm proposing a part-time, permanent part-time clerk four position. Uh, the position will work anywhere between twenty and forty hours per uh pay period. Um, and I respectfully recommend its approval.
So from moving it from full-time to part-time and raising to clerk four, you'd still be saving quite a bit of money for the auditor's office.
Yeah, it's it's still budget negative. We were able to consolidate enough of the duties and uh and through streamlining some of the way we do things, able to go down to that part-time position.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. Any questions from the other board members?
Motion to approve the personal requisition.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the personnel requisition. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. Go to public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are of concern to that person, which are not on the agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name, in-home address. Please be aware that the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries. And the Iowa code prohibits the board from deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board? Do you know on the chambers? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Uh, there's nobody indicating on Zoom.
Okay.
I will make a motion to recess till ten oh five.
You're muted, Anne.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to recess till ten oh five. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're in recess till ten oh five. Call the board of supervisors back into session. We'll start with our work sessions. We have a full house here today. I thank everybody for coming. Anne, ready? We will start with the Creative Adventure Lab, Jordan Degree. Or Ed?
Creative Adventure Lab, we're a five oh one C three nonprofit organization incorporated in the state of Iowa and headquartered at two ten Jones Street in Dubuque. Uh, this is Eric Dregney. He is the director of our Innovation Lab program. Uh, and thank you for having us today. Uh, so the Innovation Lab, a little bit about the Innovation Lab, uh, which uh has received and is receiving county funding already. Uh, the Innovation Lab provides places, programs, and partnerships that foster innovation and entrepreneurship. Our work supports the growth of ideas, businesses, and communities. Um, and because of the dramatic shifts caused by the pandemic. Uh, we're seeing the need for this work, helping businesses launch, recover, and grow as just continuing to increase. Little bit about where we have Innovation Lab facilities in Dubuque County. Uh, we had our initial facility launched in Dubuque in twenty nineteen. And then in twenty twenty, uh, August twenty twenty, we launched a second facility in Cascade, Iowa. And then just recently in December twenty twenty-one, we launched a third facility in Dyersville. So these are uh facilities located in Dubuque County. A little bit about what the Innovation Lab does. Each Innovation Lab offers co-working plans that offer low-cost office and meeting space to entrepreneurs, freelancers, remote workers. And businesses that are flexing up or down their workforce. We offer business development programming and workshops to help businesses, both new and existing businesses, launch and grow. And we provide innovation services for companies, nonprofits, and communities. These innovation services help these companies, nonprofits, and communities address challenges. Engage stakeholders and create actionable solutions that result in tangible value. How it's going. Uh, the pandemic, as you know, has dramatically impacted how businesses launch and operate, how and where employees work, and how teams collaborate. In twenty twenty-one, we have sixty-five businesses in our co-working space, and we saw a three hundred percent increase in the number of dedicated desk plans purchased in our spaces. In addition, we provided programs or services to an additional fifty-seven businesses throughout the county. Uh, all in all, this work is going really well. Uh, we continue to see increases in usage. We continue to see increases. In qualitative and quantitative feedback indicating positive impact in Dubuque County. Some of the larger companies we're helping uh through our signature innovation processes uh include the companies on the screen. Uh, we've helped these companies create strategic plans, overcome process or procedural challenges, and ultimately create value resulting in. Increases in revenue, increases in operating support, increases in employees, job growth, uh, a lot of different value created. Uh, it's different for each company we work with because we're responding to the needs of that specific company. However, we don't only work with large companies. Um, we also. However, we don't only work with large companies. Um, we also have helped small diverse businesses and business owners through affordable access to high-quality office space, meeting space, business support programs, peer learning opportunities, panel discussions where we bring in industry experts on things like business lending one oh one, HR, insurance, uh, accounting, some of these things that new and emerging business owners really need help with. Uh, and then also obviously networking events geared toward specifically toward entrepreneurs, where we can create communities of learning and where business owners can start to form relationships and ongoing peer learning opportunities with each other. Uh, these are some quotes about our model. Um, the successful model that we're implementing right here in Dubuque County is being noticed across Iowa and the Midwest. The Innovation Lab is being highlighted by statewide partners like Lieutenant Governor Adam Gregg and the Governors Empower Rural Iowa Task Force, the Iowa Economic Development Authority, and the Iowa Rural Development Council. These organizations see what we're doing in Dubuque County as an effective model for fostering innovation and entrepreneurship in rural communities across the state. This slide was probably a little confusing to you if you if you looked through the packet. Um, our work in Dubuque County is so innovative that we're being invited to help other partners across the Midwest deliver similar solutions. Right now, economic development partners across multiple states are contracting with us to foster innovation and entrepreneurship in their communities. The pins reflect the following partners that were uh helping to replicate our power services for outside of Dubuque County. Uh, Sherburne County Economic Development Authority in Minnesota, Greater Fergus Falls EDA in Minnesota, Alexandria Economic Development Commission in Minnesota, the Galena Chamber of Commerce in Galena, Illinois, Growing Small Towns in Oaks, North Dakota, Lansing Office Works in Lansing, Iowa, Farmers Mutual Telephone Company in Stanton, Iowa, Southern Valley Economic Development Authority in North Dakota, Booneville, Missouri, and Carroll EDA in Carroll, Iowa. However, uh, the funds we're requesting do not support those partners, so let's get back to this request. Uh, these funds will directly help us improve how we serve businesses in Dubuque County and allow us to continue to evolve our programs and approaches as business needs change. We'll use funds to improve our spaces, our technology, and our programs right here in Dubuque County. Uh, this is our budget, and we do have some uh adjustment to this. Uh, as you know, these grant applications were submitted, um, I believe in September, and so uh we do have, we have made progress. Uh, so let's just run through this really quickly. And we're hearing from our users, both new and and existing businesses, uh, that they have more virtual meetings, and they have more hybrid meetings, and they have more uh virtual and hybrid connections with clients now more than ever. Uh, so some of the technology upgrades that we're requesting these funds to help us implement are meeting room webcams, meeting room microphone systems that are portable and modular, and privacy booths. As you can imagine, with an increase in our uh usage and our our coworking plans in these spaces, we have more people in these spaces, and so the privacy booths give people the opportunity to jump into a a more private situation if they have to make a sensitive phone call or have a conversation with the client that they don't want other users to hear. We're requesting sixty thousand dollars for technical assistance and peer learning programs. These are programs that are in addition to what we're already doing. Uh, so none of the funds that we're requesting here are to support efforts that are already underway. We see this as an opportunity to leverage these funds to launch new programs and services that respond to our users' needs. We've heard a lot over the last year and a half from the people that we serve, what they need and how they're reacting and and responding to the pandemic. Luckily, most of the businesses that we work with have recovered well. And so now they're at a a point, uh, an inflection point where they're able to uh reinvest in growing their business even further. And so these technical assistance and peer learning programs would really be focused on helping those businesses do that, and not just the businesses that use our space, but businesses throughout the county. Some examples of things that we would uh be implementing in this technical assistance and peer learning would be uh increased access to website development support, increased access to video marketing support, increased access to overall marketing strategy development for businesses, um, a a focus on succession planning. Uh, we don't have a whole lot of useful tools to help businesses uh that are aging out to successfully plan for the succession of their business, but we know that in rural communities across the county, this is a very important topic, and so we want to focus on developing toolkits and resources to help businesses uh with their succession planning. Um, this last line item, uh, sorry, uh, this last one, the the Dyersville improvements. When we wrote this grant, we were just at the forefront of starting to build out the Dyersville space. Um, obviously, the Dyersville space is now launched. Um, however, in terms of, so so build out, those funds are no longer needed for the build out of the Dyersville space. Uh, however, the FFNE and IT numbers there, uh, we kind of went with a bare-bones investment in FFNE and IT because we knew that these funds were potentially out there. So uh, the FFNE and IT funds could still be useful to help us really make that Dyersville space a um a high-quality facility. Um, and then we would propose that the twenty-one thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars that we had proposed for build out of the Dyersville space uh maybe be reapplied to help us conduct our innovation services with rural community partners across the county uh to help them, again, address the challenges that they're facing, develop actionable solutions, and create tangible value. Just to give you an idea, that would allow seven to ten innovation services to occur, uh, that twenty-one thousand dollars. Okay, uh, this is our last slide. Uh, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for the investment that the county has already made in helping us launch these facilities and get our programming up and running in Dubuque County. Uh, we see this as an opportunity to, in some ways, amplify that existing investment and allow us to do things within the county for new and emerging businesses that we aren't able to do with our regular operating budget. Uh, this is truly a a kind of a one-time infusion opportunity to help us really amplify the impact that we can have and help the county continue in its economic recovery.
Thank you, Jordan. Uh, obviously, I wish we could fund everybody to their full extent, but that's obviously not going to be the case. Uh, there'd be a lot of discussion on who's getting funded, who won't. I don't have any questions. And where have your progress you've made and?
Thank you.
Thanks.
JRM?
I'll jump in. I have a question. What, uh, I've been to all three of your facilities, so that's been been good. I'm glad to see they're open. They look nice, seeing people working in there, and with my role at NICC, I get to interact with Eric on on maybe every other week basis and Jordan every now and then, so it's uh good to see you guys. Um, what has been the response and the reaction from the smaller communities, specifically probably in our county, being Dyersville and Cascade? What have you heard from local business owners, chamber, those types of things?
Yeah, it's been good. Um, in Dyersville, we've only been open a very short time since December. Uh, we have uh three, four coworkers working out of that space. We've done about a dozen meetings out of that space already. Um, we worked with Dyersville Economic Development to do uh strategic planning using our innovation process, and we're in talks with a a company uh in Dyersville right now to to do some innovation services with them as well. So that's been very good. In Cascade, really similar. Um, we've had uh two to four coworkers the entire time that the facility's been open. And by the way, the numbers may seem small, but just to give you some context, um, in in Dubuque, we've got about thirty coworkers in a community of about sixty thousand people. So if you translate that to a community of about two thousand people, um, like
We should have point one coworkers.
We should have, yeah, point one, but we're exceeding that 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 mark with uh two to four. And that that's how we kind of built the business model. The idea was that we'd have a few coworkers. We'd have a a space where people can access great technology um and facilitation support and innovation services, and that's in fact what is happening. So we've been working with uh groups in in Cascade as well. And then the other thing that the spaces have done in both of these communities and and Dubuque as well is um they've become a hub for people to land. So um whether it's an SBDC coach landing to meet somebody for a coaching session, there's a uh really interesting group called Empower Her, which is a a networking group for women entrepreneurs. They use our spaces um just about every week uh to do workshops and network gatherings and and other conversations that they hold. So just a couple of examples about how they're being used and um how effective they are.
Thank you. Ann?
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Well, thank you for the opportunity today to share our project and update you on our progress.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Jordan. Next, the move to the Dubuque County Energy District, Michaela Freiber. Morning, Michaela.
Good morning. Do I just use the little clicker or do I give you a nod to go to the next slide? Okay, sounds good. Hi, I'm Michaela Freiberger, and here today I'm representing the Dubuque County Energy District. A lot of my board members are on vacation, so I don't know if they're on via Zoom, but um if they are, good for them. I'm proud. Um, just a couple of key takeaways that I wanted to start at the very beginning is that um, we always ask ourselves, number one, how can we reach those who are most negatively impacted not only by COVID but by our current energy systems? And um how has COVID exposed the need to build a more resilient and do a market transformation around our energy? Additionally, how can this positively shift our environmental impact here in Dubuque County? And finally, how is the Dubuque County Energy District uh laid a foundation already to build a more equitable tomorrow and a more equitable clean energy grid? So um a couple of things that we like to talk about, um, our our Board of Directors here. Uh, they are very uh influential people in our community, and they all bring wonderful assets to the table, not only for our Energy District here in Dubuque, but also um as we continue to look to the Energy District movement throughout the state of Iowa. Um, I am the program coordinator, and I was recently appointed to the vice chair for our Clean Energy Districts of Iowa Movement. In addition to next year, I will be the chair of that organization. We additionally, as I mentioned, have a great team of Board of Directors, but they like to network, and they like to find key partners throughout our county to bring them to the table, not just recognizing that we have regional and state partners. So here's some, you know, great information about what we've done since two thousand and eighteen, and we continue to move forward and lay the groundwork for a sustainable, not only environmentally, but also um as an organization and resilient um energy district. If we look at the model throughout the state of Iowa, it's not one that just relies on other counties to do work, but we also have our own kind of uh route that we can take, and we can grow our own way um and find our own initiatives that we like to be part of. And so as that, we continue um to focus on our mission and our vision, and that's to reach all of Dubuque County residents with efficient, clean, and renewable energy by twenty fifty. And we are doing that through market transformation, education, and community outreach and partnerships. So we use this Clean Energy District movement as it, the last bullet point was in two thousand and twenty-one. We completed our strategic planning session. You can go back. Thank you. Um, and so we were able to narrow our focus. That we were able to narrow our focus to these three main um kind of key points, which was advocacy, funding, and programs. Today, we're going to kind of dive into the programs and the nature of our request. So we really look to um kind of do and focus on a couple different things um that the Clean Energy District movement uh really focuses on, in addition to our environmental impact and our equity, and focusing on reaching those who are most negatively impacted by our current energy grid. And one way we really like to do that is being the hub and um connecting all of the resources together throughout our county, whether it's at an individual level or it reaches all the way up to the county conversations, like the one that was taking place earlier today. Key things are, we appreciate being able to connect, especially into our rural communities. And so the grant uh is helping to increase our accessibility. Um, as it was mentioned, we have some partners already laid in Cascade and Dyersville with the Innovation Lab, and we can utilize that network of resources as we bring in state partners for some conversations around small businesses and energy efficiency and saving them on their utility bills. So things like those kinds of programs, all the way down to reaching out to households and holding community conversations, meeting people where they are, um, talking about energy efficiency, and working through student groups like um those that are established in our Western Dubuque Community School District to have a discussion with our partners in Delaware County um with those students about the importance when it comes to buying their own homes of energy efficiency. So moving forward, um, we recognize that there's a lot of dollars being thrown around at the federal government, and we recognize that the bipartisan infrastructure law focuses on those topics as highlighted. Energy, power, and electric grid reliability and public transportation are two key things. Go to the next one. Um, but while all of these millions and billions of dollars um are being floated around, you'll note all of those are either for um states, tribes, utilities. They are for public entities. They are for research and development of organizations um which we support. They're our partners, but that's not what we are able to do as a a not-for-profit ourselves. And all of them require um, you know, some sort of public distribution and match. So that's where we are a key player in utilizing some of those dollars to bring them into our community. Um, and you can go to the next slide. So while we are opposed, uh poised as a hub um to be at those strategic tables, we need to find ways to leverage all of those dollars that are listed up. Um, and the Clean Energy District movement uh really looks to bring all of those um conversations to our county, um, and we can individualize those conversations and ask for our individual needs, not focus on something that this might be a regional ask. Um, and so you can go to the next slide. So while we are doing all of these, we need to create successful programs that will be resilient into the future. So if we do have a pandemic that disrupts us yet again, or if we have something that is, I know the term is used a lot, unforeseen in the future, uh, we need to lay the groundwork to build that market transformation, not only as it relates to the environment, but as it relates to public health, as it relates to um keeping dollars and those who are most vulnerable in our community. And I'm not just speaking about the BIPOC community really um relationships that we've built, but also those we look to build in our rural communities. Um, how can we build a grid that is resilient for all um and all of Dubuque County residents? And so that's where we are able to localize our approach and focus on on those key partners that we've established along the way, and we can do that uniquely. So this is just an example of a project that um we can utilize um great communal impact as well as we can target reach our most vulnerable and giving them a healthy home on top of that. So the Renew Dubuque Program currently leverages private and public dollars, um, which you'll see on there. The city of Dubuque does have a buy-in. It's called an SREC, which is a solar renewable energy certificate program. Um, and so that is the first in the state. We have state eyes watching this program being launched to reach our low-to-moderate income neighbors um for solar installation. Additionally, um, we were able to get a one-time grant, um, which it total, it is twenty-five thousand dollars. We have ten households participating, so each get two thousand five hundred dollars off of their um initial install. And so um each of our homeowners that we work with have very unique situations. Some of them are able to do loans. Some of them have cash flow um in order to do the solar install. Additionally, we're working with our in-kind partners to do this um project as well. As you'll see, that we are able to do a project cost, which is much less um than if we were to ask. Um, so next, so that's um, it gives us our opportunity to lay that groundwork for our American Rescue Plan Dollar Grant um request. Number one, our main component is to um focus on energy efficiency in these households. Right now, Renew Dubuque is having our Green Iowa team just go in and do a blowhole test and change their light bulbs to reduce their um energy impact, but it would be um more environmentally friendly if we were able to go in and work with our partners to um do a total weatherization process. Additionally, that would be the first component of that. Uh, we then would leverage the county dollars very uniquely. So in the grant request, you'll see two kind of broken-down pieces. The first piece focuses on the county, um, and that is going to help our low-to-moderate income residents in the county um get a four thousand dollar um SREC solar renewable energy certificate. Um, and then additionally, um, since we are noting in Iowa, we no longer have the uh solar tax credits, nor are they buying down the current solar tax credits. We're looking to um also match ten households with a thousand um five hundred dollar match for to offset that in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. Additionally, um- Additionally, looking to, you know, pay for the administration of this project, but that's really focusing on outreach and increasing our connectivity. Again, going back to the three key takeaways that I started off, which is really reaching those who are most negatively impacted by COVID, especially around our clean energy grid. Additionally, shifting our environmental impact in Dubuque. And then how have we already laid that foundation within building an equitable tomorrow? So I thought it would be important to just let you know some of the things that we're focusing on. I'm not going to go dive into deep with those because you guys had a chance to read those ahead of time. But again, we have ambitions and we have goals that really look to lay a true foundation to disrupt our current market and reaching those who are most vulnerable, most directly here in our county. And so you're not alone in our request for funding. While this is a unique opportunity with the American Rescue Plan Grants, we also look to reach our other private and public partners and we also are doing some regional conversations as well. But I think it's really important that we focus on Dubuque County, leading that way and paving that way in the clean energy transition. As we've already mentioned, you know, we're putting ourselves at the state table after only being founded in 2018. So overall, I really want to thank you very, very much for your time today and I'm opening if anyone has any questions or any comments.
Jay, you have anything?
Yeah, Michaela, thank you. I do have a few questions. What, you mentioned a sample project. Well, how would you describe the demand for residential solar in the county?
Sure. So the Low to Moderate Income Solar Project, known as Renew Dubuque, was launched last year after City Council approved the funds, which was great, the TH released it and everybody saw it. And so it was very, very specific to a downtown urban renewal segment. So Gina and I were receiving phone calls from not only the people who live in the city of Dubuque, but people in Dubuque County who may not know what the Urban Renewal District is. So we have compiled a list of about 35 individuals who we yet have to vet for income qualifications who are interested in participating. And that is not even like our intentional outreach into the county even further than just kind of those who are more city-centric. So we do have a huge amount of interest in increasing the accessibility for solar in our county and reaching out even, even further would be much more than 35 people, I think.
Anne, do you have anything?
No, I do not. Thank you, Michaela.
One other follow-up, go ahead.
I just had one question. You have $250,000 for the ARP. Then on your slide, you had $39,090 for the county. What's that?
So that, do you want to pull that slide back up there, Kevin? So that was our additional request that we had to the County General Fund, that we had put it forth in November or December of 2020. So we still have not received word about our 2022 funding request, which is that $39,090. And that was focused on, again, outreach and programming, but that was specific to my position becoming full-time, where in the past you've paid it for a part-time for one year and then additionally for infrastructure plans around electric vehicle charging stations, which has shifted since we're noting that the federal government's putting money towards that. But we have people who are approaching me right now to establish a roundtable in our county and working with our community programming that's already focused on it, whether it be economic development or even our city transportation department.
Thank you.
Michaela, you mentioned the SREC at the city of Dubuque and there was a dollar on it, maybe $3,800, something like that. One is that only the city of Dubuque, and my idea is, could we fund a portion of that so it'd be eligible for, for any resident in the, in the county?
Sure. So on your document, you'll notice that there's 40K that's asked. That would be for founding a countywide SREC market. So SRECs are solar renewable energy certificates. So right now, our closest counterpart would be Illinois that has it. So instead of paying people on the aftermath for lowering their greenhouse gas emissions, what the city of Dubuque is doing is they're paying them ahead of time for reducing their demand on our electric grid. And so it's anticipated that the $2,285 per household is going to be for the next three years that we're paying for that electric, the electric. Wow. So the generation of that. And so what happens is they're getting that as an upfront cost from the city. They just have to sign a contract that they're going to keep their electric on and that we get their numbers reported from them of either A, how much electric they've generated and B, how much they've used. So that, that is something that's built into for the county, but that's a much, it's a $4,000 ask for the county.
Okay. So if that was included, it would be, regardless if you lived in the city or incorporated or a smaller town, you'd be eligible for the same amount?
Correct. So the, okay, yep. So the reason why it's increased to $4,000, which is almost $800 more, is because right now we have project partners who want to be part of this initial, you know, launch and this pilot project. So that's why we're able to bring the project cost down. Some things like inverters are about $800 and they're not going to be able to donate 20 more on top of the 10 projects we have. Additionally, we're recognizing that we're going to still try to apply for other grants and try to apply for other things to leverage those dollars, but we might not be able to get the full $2,500. We might only be able to get $1,000 per household.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward, we'll go to our third presenter, the Dubuque County Historical Society, Erin Dragato.
Thank you. Morning, everybody. As Supervisor Potov said, my name is Erin Dragato. I am the Vice President for Development for the Dubuque County Historical Society and National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium. I have some colleagues here today, Paula Newhouse, who is our Grant Writer, our VP of Finance and Operations, Tommy Lang, and online CEO Kurt Strand. So we appreciate your invitation to participate and for giving arts and culture an opportunity to regain some traction lost over the course of the pandemic. So I'm here representing DCHS and also showcasing our request for approximately 1.1 million in ARPA funds to specifically enhance tourism and showcase what an investment like this would do to bolster the Dubuque County economy. So before I get into the request, I wanted to remind everybody here today who we are and what makes up the Dubuque County Historical Society. Our mission is to inspire stewardship by creating educational experiences where history and rivers come alive. What you're seeing here is us by the numbers. So annually, we have 200,000 visitors from all 50 states and 70 countries. We have over 41,000 items in our historical collection, 2,000 animals representing two, over 200 species. We are one of five Smithsonian affiliates in the state of Iowa, one of only 13 institutions to be accredited by both the Association of Zoos and Aquariums and the American Alliance of Museums. We're rated very high on TripAdvisor, Google, Facebook and member households, 3,100 represented. The 13 buildings and vessels is important to note because some of which are on the National Registrar and including the William Black dredge boat, which is our biggest item in our collection in our ice harbor and is a registered national landmark. I highlight these because of their tie to significant federal dollars, which we will talk about a little later in the presentation. And the partners, you know, these key partners here listed, the Dubuque Community Schools, River Cruises and Viking, which is coming. We partner with many more, 35 plus in the, in Dubuque County, but these specifically directly impact tourism. Next slide. So two things to highlight here in our digital assets. What you're seeing on the left-hand side is our numbers today, 34,000 Facebook views. But website and social media traffic alone has increased by 50% in just as little as five years. And the visitation stats on the right-hand side, the thing to highlight here is that the surrounding area guest visitation is consistently higher than those in Dubuque. And that's a really good thing because one can make an inference that if more folks are visiting from the surrounding areas, they need a place to stay or they'll spend money at restaurants and shop in our county, thereby bolstering our, our economy. These two slides with the data points are important to relay because they help us know, one, how we keep visitors interested in coming back and two, how we are moving our vision forward, which is to become the world's leader in interpreting and protecting the life, history and culture of our rivers, and to create a more global, knowledgeable and engaged citizen. These stats are also significant because over the evolution of our organization in the last 50 years, we have been able to innovate with the times. We were first a museum, ham house, collections and a riverboat museum. We were second, an aquarium with the build of the Port of Dubuque campus. And in 2021, just last year, we opened a new 9,000 square foot River of Innovation exhibit, which has added science center squarely, STEM education as the third leg to that stool. So the reason I emphasize the work and the money request only amplifies what we consider to be cornerstones of our organization. So this slide, what I wanted to highlight for emphasis there is, is sort of a before and after. So what you're seeing here, pre-pandemic economic impact that we provided to Dubuque County. There was an Arts and Economic Prosperity Study conducted in 2012, which calculated the tourism draw for our organization, which amounts to greater than 10.5 million annually. We say greater here because it's been 10 years and it's probably more, but we don't know that until we do another study. I broke down the other government funds here so that you could see totals given to us from other government entities since 1999 and see where the county lines up. The state of Iowa figure there, 36.7 million includes Enhanced Iowa Grant that was given to us early on to create the Port of Dubuque. So that was close to 29 million. And then below, this is the fun part. The, so you're seeing what has happened to us in 2020. So we were closed for 90 days. We had, within 10 weeks, a loss of 89,000 visitors, which also equated to 900,000 admissions. Total loss for the year, 3 million by December 2020. 65% of our staff was furloughed in the first two weeks. All full-time staff was on voluntary work share for seven months and reduced education staff and shifts by 40%. Total federal state relief received is 2.3 million. That was through PPP and SVAG and the state of Iowa also. And so in the quick math, you still see that we are a gap of around $700,000 that this opportunity would support in addition to sustainable work to maintain our collections, historic interpretation, infrastructure and capacity building to upkeep our structures and humanities programming. Next slide. So here's exactly what we're proposing. Enhance our exhibits and advancing educational program offerings. Funds here would bring 40% of education staff shifts and programming fully back. We put off AV and IT wireless infrastructure, so this would increase network connectivity upgrades throughout the campus for the influx of visitors that we will have. We intend to increase visitation market radius from 90 miles to 180. We currently focus our marketing in the top 10 local markets, you saw back on slide three. But with this increase, we would focus efforts specifically in Des Moines, Madison and Galena, which are areas which we see more untapped potential. And that equates to about 3 million more people. This also increased visibility, will focus on amplifying our county museum partners in Dyersville and Cascade. We will also use the funds to revamp our website and increase web traffic, which is increased since, back on slide three, you noticed. Hosting a national traveling exhibit also. Some of you may remember Titanic that we brought here in 2015. We intend to do something equally as exciting. That all told, additional funds for marketing would increase our potential visitors to 100, between 100 and 125,000 in just over three years. Next slide. So our proposed summer 2023 exhibit is called Popnologies, Pop Culture Plus Technology. And an exhibit, this is an exhibit that celebrates and explores some of the greatest works of innovation and imagination in history. It's an exhibit where science meets science fiction. So what you see here, hopefully things familiar to you. Interaction with robots, virtual reality, 3D gaming, Mars Rover simulator, city of future building area. You can see there, there's a DeLorean from Back to the Future, R2-D2 model and the life-size alien robot from the movie Aliens. Part of the reason this one was chosen is that 2023 is the 20th anniversary of the Mississippi River Center. We were looking for an exhibit that both harkened back to nostalgia on multiple levels, as well as tie into a permanent exhibit, which is the River of Innovation, that focuses on local innovation and building an audience of science, technology, engineering and math in a very strong way. This exhibit will target, you know, anyone who remembers pop culture, but specifically, you know, those in their 40s and 50s and their kids who are now getting into this, this type of stuff and 20-somethings. Really, there's something for everyone, but we, we expect this to be a big draw and we've done the analysis from other museums who have already had it. This also would extend programming to increase audience through enhanced summer camps, summer evening events for adults, adult kids speaker series to talk about advancements in technology, innovation. The whole package of upgrades and offerings for this request really just enhances the overall impact we would like to see and have in Dubuque County. Next slide. So finally, speaking of overhaul impact. So I won't read everything here, but what I want to highlight is that, you know, we employ 50 full-time staff and 60 part-time annually and that directly correlates to one of the, one of the statistics there below as to how museums are economic engines. For every direct museum job, that supports an additional job in the economy. So this, another reminder is that, you know, greater than 10.5 million in tourism dollars that we bring in to Dubuque County annually. 35-plus county partners, which includes school districts, arts and culture organizations, Dubuque County Conservation, universities, colleges. 76% of all US leisure travelers participate in cultural or heritage activities such as museums and spend 60% more money on average than other leisure travelers. That is a study done by the American Alliance of Museums. In total, economic activity of museums generates over 12 billion in tax revenue, a third of which goes to state and local governments. And each job created by the museum sector results in 16,495 in additional tax revenue. And if you just count our full-time employees in that calculation, that amounts to 824,000 and change for Dubuque County alone. So like other arts and culture organizations, COVID hit our organization pretty hard. You know, we, we were able to navigate thanks to our leadership team and our board and, and really our community and some, some funds made up through government grants. But here, we're asking to support, you know, some, some losses, but more importantly, how we can increase the museums' economy and viability for tourism in Dubuque County. So again, we thank you for letting us participate and hope this presentation helped articulate the importance of our, our museum and as it relates to Dubuque County and bringing us all back to whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Erin. Anne, do you have any questions?
I don't know that it's a question so much as just expressing gratitude. Erin, thank you for the fantastic presentation. And as I told the governor, when she was here late last summer, when I had a chance to visit with her, I, I try to see the, the community in some respects through the eyes of the people we want to be here. And this is my five-year-old granddaughter. Her favorite place to be is your river museum. It just is. She talks about it. And then of course, the splash pad. And then of course, the splash pad in Asbury. So that's pretty cool too. But, you know, I think that as, as vibrant as the museum is, it reflects directly on the health of our economy, both in the city of Dubuque and in the county. So this is an important presentation for me. This is an important ARPA request for me. And I appreciate all that you've done. You've, you have explored small grants, you've explored big grant opportunities. And I just think you've done a, you've just done a great job trying to get your, your legs underneath you as a, as an organization. And we need you to be ready to go because we're going to have a tremendously crazy summer, I think.
We hope, yes, thank you. Really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you also. I, I love the museum and all the, all the goodness around it. So I always try to take my kids there as well. The, and your proposal is very detailed. So I like that. My question is related to kind of the marketing and tourism. If awarded, do you, do you feel or think that the marketing tourism would be focused on your onsite attractions or in conjunction with more all Dubuque? Or is it still to be determined?
Well, I, I, I think mostly the latter, but I would say because of the partner, strong partnerships we have, of course, we will, will work with our, our community partners. You know, the, the Port of Dubuque specifically is gearing up for, for Viking. We look to Dyersville to bolster Dubuque economy as well. Dubuque County specifically with the baseball. And, you know, we're open and willing to partner with, with any indoor individual or, or organization that really helps draw tourism in, in. And, and we are doing that through the Museum of Art, Galena, and our partners even, even in Wisconsin and, and downstate.
Very good. And my second one would be kind of on when you talked about kind of education, programming and staff. You've got a lot of people that are going to have their hands involved in this initiative, which is good. Just maybe a consideration of funding. If there would be either a half-time or possibly a full-time person in the, in the lead role. Because one of the only questions I had is like, who's leading this? You've got a lot of, you know, good people listed, eight or nine that would be components of this. But, you know, think about opportunities that you might get to get a half-time, three-quarters time, maybe up to a full-time person that actually would lead this initiative over the next three years.
That's a good consideration. We, we believe in our team to, to, to really amplify the whole package. But it's a good consideration to keep eye on prize. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute recess.
I'll second.
Motion to second to break for five minutes. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. We'll be back shortly before 11:00. We call the Board of Supervisors back into session. Our next work session is with HACAP, with Heather Amy, I believe.
Good morning. Thanks for the invitation to be here to talk about our ARPA proposal. I'm Jane Drappel. I'm the CEO of HACAP. With me is Heather Harney. She's our regional housing director. And we have a couple of other colleagues here with us this morning. Mitch Finn, our deputy director, and Ron Axdel, our Dubuque County Director. So we're not going to spend a lot of time talking about HACAP today because we were here just a few short weeks ago doing a presentation with the supervisors and spent quite a bit of time talking about our organization. But we want to talk specifically about our ARPA proposal that we submitted. And one of the strategic initiatives of HACAP is to provide safe and affordable housing to low-income and at-risk families. And throughout the pandemic, housing for this population has become even more challenging. So in our, the proposal we put together, we are requesting funding to purchase houses that we can rehab if rehab is needed and make available to the specific population at a rate that's below fair market value. So Heather's going to talk specifically about her proposal. I'm going to turn things over to her.
Thank you. Like Jane said, I am the regional housing director here at HACAP and I oversee our homeless and affordable housing initiatives at the organization. Our proposal is to acquire between three to five single-family homes or like multifamily units. A lot of this is dependent on the housing market, of course, on when we go to do purchasing and what's available at the time. And then we are also looking at approximately about $100,000 in renovation costs for the properties that are acquired. We would be renting them at, would be below fair market, right? So fair market rent not only includes the rental costs that somebody would, a tenant would pay, fair market rent also includes the utility costs. So for example, for in Dubuque, fair market rent for a two-bedroom is $834. That means that's rent and all utilities in that unit should be no more than $834. So that would be a two-bedroom. We do this similarly in Lynn, Benton, Johnson and Washington Counties already in our area. We rent all of our units below fair market and in some cases significantly below fair market. In our proposal, we would prioritize these units for homeless families and then, and those with housing choice vouchers or who are enrolled in other homeless initiatives, which would be a rapid rehousing program. And there are a few other entities within the county that administer those types of programs that we would be partnering with. Also, we would be looking at income upon entrance. We typically rent all of our units at 50% or below AMI. So for a family of four in Dubuque County, that's around $39,000. So that would be approximately kind of our income limitations for those. We, as a landlord throughout the pandemic, we've seen what has happened on the tenant side of the pandemic and COVID, and then also the landlord side. For tenants, it's been very difficult to find affordable housing. The market has condensed dramatically. Their wages are not keeping up, specifically now with inflation, with the costs of providing, paying for rent. Utilities have gone up dramatically. Being able to afford to rent on a low income without some sort of permanent subsidy is extremely difficult. What we, as an agency, have looked at on trying to do what we can to help, you know, make the situation better, what we can do immediately in all the communities we serve is to provide more housing at a reduced cost. So people can get into housing and have a roof over their head and then start working on some of the other things that they need to work on in order to become more successful and to increase their wage growth or access to disability and all the, all those other things that we see with the very, the homeless population and the low to moderate income population that need additional services. From the landlord perspective, we are already a landlord to about over 110 units. From landlord perspective, landlords have also had a very, it's been a difficult time also to be a landlord during the pandemic. They, a lot of landlords lost money, particularly a lot of small landlords, lost significant amount of money because of eviction moratorium. What we are seeing across eastern Iowa is small landlords that wish to be kind of the bread and butter of housing to low-income and moderate income households, who maybe, you know, didn't do, didn't depend on a lot of credit checks or who didn't depend on an insane amount of rental references to have people available to get into their units. Those landlords have left the market. They lost money. There's a lot of movement in the rental market between landlords selling to one and off, one, to one another and selling off their properties. So right now, there is a lot of market availability for landlords to acquire other rental properties. Particularly there's large portfolios that have been up for sale for significant amount of time across eastern Iowa. So we think that is buying opportunity for us right now, in order for us to continue to do our services. Trying to think of kind of what else was in our proposal. For Dubuque, this county, sorry, specifically, the housing wage is significantly more than kind of the surrounding communities. In 2021, the Low Income Housing Coalition presents an annual report every year on what it costs, what type of wage you need in order to afford a two-bedroom at fair market rent in each community across the United States. Dubuque is one of the highest in all of Iowa. It's at $5 or $15.50 an hour is the wage needed in order to, in order to live in a two-bedroom unit at fair market rent. So for Lynn County, that's actually like $15.30. In Scott County, it's like $15.02. Some of the other rural areas, we're talking about 13 or, you know, about 1350. So Dubuque has its own unique challenges with the age of the housing stock, I believe, and the cost of utilities. It's an urban area without a, with, has a couple of small universities, which also brings up some, some of the costs of housing due to students. So we, when we look at our proposals, we do look at what is different about each community that we serve. And Dubuque definitely has a different, different housing market than some of our other communities. So I think that's kind of the breadth of the, the proposal. We would be putting in $125,000 of HACAP's own discretionary funds to help with the project. Right now, we're looking at about 100,000 to assist in final rehab and then another 25,000 to help with administration. And we are looking at, at the time that we acquire the units and then what the work would be needed, we are looking at either working with local contractors to do that or some other nonprofits who might be able to partner with in doing that work. So we have not reached out to any other nonprofits formally at this time until we know if the project will be funded. But that is something that we would prefer to do if we are able to do that. Do you have any other things, Jane?
One other thing I would add is, once we have units acquired, we also would perform our weatherization services on it, making the home as energy efficient as we can make it. So that would reduce future costs for people living in a unit.
Yeah, thank you.
So any questions we can answer?
Jane, do you have any? I do. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Housing's important. So I appreciate you bringing this, this topic to us. How many current homes do you have under management or ownership?
About 120.
120, okay. And in Dubuque County, zero, I would say.
Zero, it would be a new market.
You're just starting. What do you see for demand for those existing 120s? Just, you know.
I would say right now, as we do homeless services, a lot of money coming in to, for homeless services regarding with property housing funds, additional housing choice vouchers, but that money is only good if there's units available to put people into. And I think that's what we're coming into a, a problem is that there are not enough available units and/or landlords who are willing to rent to that population in order to utilize that, those rapid rehousing dollars or housing choice voucher dollars. That, we saw a dramatic increase in the amount of time to house a homeless individual, which was probably about 20 days in the community to at least 45. I mean, that's largely due to the, the low amount of housing units available for this population.
Follow-up question quick. How would this program compare or complement what currently is available through Eastern Iowa Regional Housing Authority? Help an uneducated person like me figure it out.
We're a partner in that system, so.
It would be, it would be like that, some of the other nonprofit affordable housing agencies. So for Oaks and Affordable Housing Network, we partner with a lot. And Lynn County has come in recently into Dubuque. There are nonprofit housing entity as well that provides housing. Us, yes, like ECIA and the trust funds and all that is a part of a large system. And I think kind of as we have worked on providing housing, we've seen that for this income population, a lot of nonprofits need to come now in and do the work. It's very hard for a for-profit company, if you're going to provide safe and affordable and decent quality affordable housing for a, for a profit company to come in and provide that at a, at a cost and giving. for a for-profit company to come in and provide that at a, at a cost and giving another rent which these tenants can afford.
So at our existing units, Jay, we have, as Heather said, a hundred and twenty plus units. We have waiting lists for people to go into those units.
You'd anticipate that in Dubuque?
Yes, yes, yeah, yes, definitely.
Thank you very much. No more questions. Thank you.
Anne, do you have anything?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Heather and Jane. Thank you for the project idea in addition to your, your presentation today. A concern that I have is that should we fully fund this program request, you will be in a bidding war with some of our citizens trying to buy the same properties. So in a market where housing moves within twenty-four hours, I feel like we could be adding an artificial accelerant to making it more difficult for local people to buy their first home, their entry home or a downsized home. So that's a, you know, help me struggle with that. What's the, what would be your response?
You know, certainly, you know, there are certain price points of homes that we'll be looking at. But if in fact you don't have a place for homeless individuals to move into, if you don't have residences that are safe and affordable, you know, you're challenged with that in your community as well, too.
And I would say, kind of when we've done this before, there are people who, who are selling their homes who may want to actually sell them for a purpose like this. For the, when they sell their home, they know, hey, this is going back into the market. It's going to be used for this purpose. A nonprofit is going to be taking it over. And sometimes we do have homeowners come to us and ask if we would be purchasing their homes. So I think, I would like to think that might be part of the solution is we find members of the community like-minded who are wanting to maybe sell some of their properties will come to us knowing we want to do this project, correct?
Would there be a way for us to assist you if and when that happens? So in other words, you say to me, in three months or maybe six weeks, we have these folks who've entered into a contract with us and we're the final key, maybe we're the matching grant, so to speak. But the beginning of a new program is problematic for me as much as we need housing. It's, it's hard to be a competitor with those families trying to make change. You know, the affordable housing is a problem for everyone.
Right. And, you know, we understand that as well, too. You know, certainly, we would work with you to share information, you know, as to what we're looking at for properties. We would, we could do that, yeah.
And I would imagine, you know, whoever's administering the ARPA funds and the contracts with these, we'd be working with them almost, you know, in the, in the process to even get the unit that we'd like approved for purchase, so.
One of the programs that existed in Dubuque and has, and has been disbanded was the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, the True North Project. So that might be, should we decide to pursue this, that would be something I'd like to explore. The good, the bad, I know Ed Raiber was at one time the administrator of that program and I'm not, I am not asking Ed to come to the, to the microphone to talk about that program at this time. But before I would fund this request, I would need to know more information about that and that's research that I can do, so thank you.
Certainly.
Anne's concern was similar to mine is how are you going to find places? It's difficult in Dubuque right now and like Anne said, twenty-four hours are sold or have several bids on them already, so. Thank you very much for coming and thank you for what you do for it again.
Yes, thank you.
Moving forward, we'll have the Julian Dubuque Film Festival, Cheryl Sheldon.
Well, I'm not Cheryl, but she's with me. I'm Susan Gurrell. I'm the Executive Director of the Julian Dubuque International Film Festival, which we lovingly call J-Div to shorten it. And Cheryl is our Development Director, helps with the grants and many additional funds we can find, so Cheryl is with me. For those who aren't familiar with the festival, we are a five-day event that happens annually around the last weekend, full weekend of April, all pretty much downtown. But we do involve other venues such as the River Museum, the Dubuque Museum of Art. We have screenings from films from, that come from all over the world. We are a nonprofit at 501(c)(3). Some of the things you'll see up that we have only a staff of one full-time, which is me and one half and a lot, a lot of amazing volunteers. We have over a hundred volunteers that throughout the year watch films, help screen the submissions that come in. We get over eight hundred films to a thousand submitted each year. We narrow those down to about the top hundred and twenty-five features, docs and shorts. We are an extremely unique and one-of-a-kind event that is in Dubuque. One thing about film, it is not only just for entertainment, but it's educational. So if you take a lot of documentaries that we have, they, like I said, come from all over and maybe of organizations or events that happen that people aren't aware of or never heard about. We pair you up with other opportunities in Dubuque to show or have panels and discussion. One particular film this year is A Decent Home, which is about the transplanting of people that are in module homes or trailers being, their property being bought up and they're moved out and there's nowhere to put them. We have, that documentary is in the festival, definitely educational because I didn't know anything about it until I watched it and screened it. And we're going to have a panel and so people that are coming from around the world will be able to sit and listen to that and listen from other people about, you know, the problems, what we can do for those things. That's just a small example of what the festival does. This is the eleventh year and I've been the ED for eight and I specifically took and been involved to for an economic impact on the city. I'm obviously in the film ministry. I love film and I know how it can be very educational, very entertainment. The arts are extremely important, whether it's music, art, sculpturing, painting. Film, I know a lot of emphasis is always in science and, and grants a lot go to that. But I think the arts are extremely important for mental stability as well and educational. One thing we noticed during COVID, I'm sure everybody did, what is the first thing you all did? While you're sitting around doing nothing, you watched movies and you were either inspired by them or you maybe were a little more sad, but it gave you an emotion. And film does that. And I think that the J-Div is a very important piece of that, bringing it to Dubuque. Like I said, we do screen all over downtown and other venues. So those, when, you know, people talk about tourism, this is a great example of we're bringing people from all over the world. Pre-COVID, we had over six thousand people attend. And like I said, they came from Brazil, Germany, Ireland, from all over the US as well. And then went to those places such as the River Museum, the Dubuque Museum of Art. So we are definitely a huge promoter of tourism and have a huge economic impact. Pre-COVID, we, over a five-day event, we had economic impact about eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars over that five days. So people are coming, they're spending money and they're learning about Dubuque. People actually do move here because of the film festival, myself, my family. We have a friend that just bought a house, loves Dubuque. So I think it just, it's, it's bringing a great, unique event here, but also bringing people here and learning about the amazing city. The reason we wrote about the grant was, for this opportunity was because we were hit by COVID just like everybody else. So mostly our loss was in ticket revenue. Our sponsorships were down, people were kind of scared to come back. We did end up coming, we didn't have a festival in twenty twenty. We did have, doing one in twenty twenty-one, which we are very happy to bring it back alive. We felt was very important to do something to get things alive again in the city. People did come, but we were experiencing that loss from twenty twenty, from twenty nineteen for COVID here. So as you can see at the glance, we have over films that screen here. This year would be like thirty-five countries, twenty nineteen, over six thousand people attended. We offer panels and workshops. We are educational as well. And we have over a hundred award-winning features, docs and shorts that screen throughout the festival. And like I mentioned, we are, we feel not only just a very unique event here, but also a very diverse event. So we offer a lot of free things to open it up to the entire community to come and be part of. Or we also actually even partner with like the Creative Adventure Lab. We have a free kids' day that we have, so kids can go and enjoy that. And then it also brings people to their place. So we, we do a lot, not only just through the festival for the one week, but we also do yearly events. So for instance, I guess on the next slide, we have our winter film series, which is we show a cause-related film in January, February and March. And it's usually a film that was at the festival from the week, the year before. Or it might be one that's going to be coming up and we bring in the filmmaker and we pair it with panelists. For instance, we just did one on Where's Nancy, which was on Alzheimer's. And we had a, two doctors from the area that were specializing that to speak to the audience that was there along with the filmmaker. And then we do other community events and workshops happen throughout the year. So we're definitely community-driven. We definitely are trying to bring in that entertainment, tourism, arts to the community. And I think really proud, not only of how well we do it, but with the amazing volunteers that help run it. So we're very extremely blessed with that. I miss anything, Cheryl? Just making sure. I'm your shortest speaker. So does anybody have any, any comments? Any questions?
Anne, do you have anything?
Did we have a budget slide?
No, we did not, sorry. We, the grant.
Twenty-six dollars.
Twenty-six thousand, six hundred, correct. Majority that was for our ticketing and sponsorship loss from twenty twenty.
And this might be something too that would be appropriate for the purchase of services type grant or we can use ARPA money. But I, I guess this maybe is more of a comment, but Susan, I remember that movie I'm Still Here, where you featured a documentary about human trafficking and you really electrified the community. You brought in that filmmaker. And that's been screened many times since in our community and I know it has reached a national audience, but so when you say it's educational, I know that to be so because one film can cause that ripple to grow. And, and you do that, I've been to your fundraiser and you certainly do have people from around the country. So for me, it's how to make it fit and how to be most impactful and what your greatest need is. And so as you begin into, are you set to go this year? Do you have your corporate sponsorships back?
Yep, we do. We did apply for about twelve to thirteen grants throughout the year. So we've been lucky that it's helped also with the, you know, the massive COVID loss that we had along with everybody else in the arts. So we are going through, we have about a hundred and twenty-five features, shorts and docs that we'll screen again in the festival at the end of April. And, you know, right now people are wanting to come back, I think, especially a lot of filmmakers. I have a lot of them coming in even from overseas, so that's opening up and really excited. They go online, they read a lot about Dubuque. A lot of interesting pieces, people don't realize Dubuque is on the Mississippi. They envision it all flat in cornfields and I, yeah, and that is a huge draw. They're like, oh, I can't wait to go to Dubuque and see the Mississippi, which then draws them to the other organizations here that, you know, have those event, those things that they can see. So it really, it, it isn't just, to me, it's not just about films. It's about the experience that people hear and what you're learning and creating from it. And that really is the biggest piece that makes us extremely unique, I think, in the, in the community. And I'm really proud to be part of it, so it's, but thank you. Yeah, that was a great film. The BVM sisters did a lot with that and took it around and it was amazing.
Back in.
Anything else?
Just a comment, I've heard positive things about your, your festival over the years and it seemed to, you know, it was new roughly ten years ago. I didn't realize it was that, that long ago. A lot of positive reactions to it. And then your request is relatively modest, so I appreciate that, that ask as well.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Appreciate the kind words and, and love being part of this community. So it's meant a lot to me because I moved here. You have a great community, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Move on to our last presentation, it'd be the Fountain of Youth, Caprice.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Caprice Jones, Executive Director of the Fountain Youth Program. I have with me Sarah Cobble. She's Operations Manager. She actually worked diligently on this particular grant proposal. We revised it and we'll be speaking from the aspects of two components of it, which would be the COVID-nineteen relief funding that we had asked for originally, but also revision of our Workforce Acceleration Program. So as you see, the mission of the Fountain Youth is to change the mindsets that contributes to generational poverty. And the S is emphasized because not only the individuals who's been trapped in generational poverty needs their mindset to be helped changed, but also individuals never experienced it, should be changed as well so we can all be a community. Next. COVID-nineteen has had many challenges and as everyone that has experienced losses of revenue during the process of COVID-nineteen, when it first started, we was one of them. We basically, we had a contract with the Iowa prison system to go in and actually implement Real Talk and also Partners in Change in the prison system. We had two particular prisons in mind, which was Anamosa and Newton. We had completed the process of going to get our volunteer reels and the pre-up programs, everything we had to get to get in. And before you know it, everything was shut down. And so we lost that revenue. We was never able to recover the money from them to be able to implement the program and actually help that system begin to work out of the traditions of, you know, just the regular routines of thinking in prison. And so we're asking for help in that, in that area. And also the giving rate far as with our donors. The giving rate had, you know, it slowed down tremendously. Everyone was kind of scared. People was in fear of what will be next, so they stopped giving as much as they would have previously to COVID-nineteen. And so we asked for some help in that area. And Transforming the Future also was affected by it. That's our major fundraiser. And our numbers were not as prominent as they was the prior years. And so we asked for some help to recover that as well. And next. Okay. So impacting goals. Basically, the funding that we receive, it gives us an opportunity to be able to build capacity. It gives us an opportunity to provide the programming that we provide. Our program basically is based on a lot of one-on-one opportunities with working with people. So when we, when we don't have funding to be able to meet our goals for our budget, then it kind of reduces our opportunities to really make the impact that we need in the community. And so, and it, okay, I'm sorry. So I'm sorry. I don't know how this go. All right, this is my first time. So, so basically, the disproportionate effect on individuals that was affected by COVID-nineteen, as we all are familiar with, was individuals in poverty. So those are people who we really work with, people that's in poverty and situational poverty. But just so happened, a lot of our participants, they continued to work throughout the pandemic, but they needed encouragement to be able to keep their jobs. So the job retention was the main aspect of what we was doing with our programming. So next, please. And so we have on this particular sheet, I noticed that the thirty-five thousand dollars for capacity building money from Dubuque County, I'm grateful that we was awarded that opportunity to have that funding. And so the things that I had mentioned in emphasis, which was basically the recovery of the funding for the prison system programming and also to decrease corporate donations and the money for the Transforming the Future. If y'all will put that in consideration, I would definitely appreciate it. Next. Workforce acceleration. So this morning, I was trying to put everything together, like, you know, how would I present this today? And actually, something came to my mind, basically far as with the workforce acceleration, it's an innovative approach. I first shared this approach with the Deputy Director of Our Workforce Development for the State of Iowa on a podcast. And he quoted that this is something that's not happening nowhere. And so Dubuque would be a forerunner and a pioneer of basically showing what change really supposed to look like through skin in the game. And I liken that to Joe because Joe, Joe Kennedy, he gave me an opportunity to really think outside the box while people are stuck in a box needing help outside the box. And so he basically said, hey, Caprice, I think that the inmates that would be a part of this program, they need to have some skin in the game. And today, I thought about it clearly. Skin in the game really shows the commitment. It's a partnership and it's not just a one-way, like a handout. It's a hand up and that has to be proven through a partnership. And with this particular model, we are asking the inmates that would be a part of this program to be able to put skin in the game by paying half of the cost back. So they're basically given a hand out, I mean, a hand up to the next people that's going to be in line to come along. And that's future thinking. And he also is putting himself in a position to be prepared to have a, not just a job, but a career opportunity. The Job and Workforce Development Program is designed to really affect individuals' emotional intelligence. It introduced them to some different things about themselves that's beneath the surface. It introduced them to some different things about themselves that's beneath the surface. I talked to my own little brother yesterday. He's in uh, Georgia and he worked for Boeing, right? But my little brother, he suffered from a lot of different traumatic experiences growing up, just in our family alone in his life. I knew his life was going to be messed up when he got older because I was there in the inception of a lot of things that my mother and father's was, was trapped in. And he was going to be the blunt of that. And so basically, he said this, when I tried to go into a deep conversation with him, he said, bro, I like to stay on the surface. And that's most people staying on the surface, just to be able to get a quick instant gratification moment. And with this program, we getting people beyond that way of thinking. Because we're going to be working with them for eight weeks. Next please. For eight weeks, helping them to deal with what's important. And what's important in their life is to not just get out of jail, but stay out of jail. And I know that that would benefit everyone in this room. And it'd benefit the community. One of the things about individuals that's been trapped in generational poverty thinking is settling for less, thinking it's the best. And so most individuals that goes to jail is just a regular routine of just preparing to do what you've been doing. Now they get an opportunity to be extracted from the distractions of the regular everyday life. And they get a chance to look at what life can be like, not just for them, but for their children's children. Next please. And this is an example of our success story. See, I believe that change, it happens one person at a time, but it causes a ripple effect. That's how the Fountain Youth came about. The ripple effect from hold it, the thought process that came to my own mind, which was how could I help somebody break the cycle? And so this is a part of that.
Oh, it's not gonna play?
Okay, sorry about that. So Patrick is one of our participants. He started in this program from his probation officer, introducing them to me. Because at the time, he was in a hopeless situation. He was trapping himself by the trappings that he was born into and the things that was coming out of him and giving up, running from the fight, the fight for his own life. And he came and met with me every week for sixty days back of two thousand and twenty. And that went on for two months and I connected him with responding roles. They was willing to put some skin in the game. See, the thing is, the participants, the business community, and also the government agencies that's here in Dubuque has to all play a role in this being successful. And that's the beautiful model of it because everyone would have some skin in the game. It's a commitment. It's a commitment to change. And with change comes some pain. So that means that everyone is taking some type of risks. But we minimize the risk with us being a forerunner of being able to minimize, minimize the risk with our partners by us going all in with these participants every day, giving it all, all. And so you all can rest assured that we're doing what we're supposed to do with this money for them to get them some money. And so uh, Patrick, he's been responding roles ever since January of two thousand and twenty-one. It's been over a year. Patrick is awesome. He's amazing. The first day that he actually came to me, um, when he called me, the day he's supposed to start it, he said, Caprice, man, I don't know what to do. I threw up. I'm like, what you mean you threw up? He's saying, I'm nervous. I say, man, you, you better get to work, man. He's saying, you think I should go? Absolutely. Just wipe your face and go on to work. I went up there to the job to see if he actually went. And he had stopped me before I left him talking with him. He said, Caprice, I'm glad you, I'm glad you told me what you told. I'm like, what? He said, man, if I'd have called anybody else, they'd have told me not to go. That's the normal. Now we're breaking the norm. Be a part of it. Help us. Next. Okay. So this is the proposal and I'll let Sarah explain everything.
All right. So this is our budget for the Workforce Acceleration Program that Caprice has just discussed. Um, what you see is where we're trying to pull our money from, from every, every different source. I am too short for this. All right. Okay, this is the budget that we have figured out where everybody is giving a little bit. You can see where all of our money is coming from. Um, each year we are increasing our businesses, uh, partnerships as well as our participants going through. So when you see that total needed going up by year, it's because we are increasing our need as well as who is coming in. Um, the Fountain Youth is contributing in that first column each year through our donations and other ways of getting funding. Um, and that next tab is what we've requested from the county. You can also see the tab after that, that that is what we're requesting from our participants as well. So we are splitting it. Part of the deal with being in our program is that each participant signs a contract with the Fountain of Youth as well as our business partners, that they will contribute each paycheck. So for example, one of our businesses is paid weekly. With that being said, the participant will pay the Fountain of Youth into a separate account just for workforce acceleration, weekly fifty dollars until they get to the seven hundred and fifty. We estimate that it takes about fifteen hundred dollars with work hours and supplies for our participants to get here. So we're splitting all of this out. Well, no, it's more like two thousand with each participant, but um, our businesses, they're also donating to our demand. And then we have um, no fundraising need in the first three years with the funding that we'll be getting. And then we also have money from the GDDC that we, that we receive, that we utilize towards our rent and overhead costs. So this includes um, our packets, our workbooks and one-on-one. This is a one-on-one program that we are doing with them. The first eight weeks we do in a group setting. And then after that, we are working with them one-on-one for the following four months. And then after their eight weeks, they have a job, right? And they're making more than a livable wage. Um, we've confirmed with all of our partners what their wage is. So it brings them below the, or above the federal poverty level by a substantial amount. Currently, our participants, over seventy percent of them are two hundred percent below poverty. So this would be a huge increase and benefit to them as well. So that's what I have for our budget.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that um, in the jail partnership, we work with NICC as well as our workforce development. All three uh, organizations go in every week and we work with these individuals one-on-one. And basically they're receiving uh, expertise in a lot of these different areas that covers over the eight-week program. And that basically also shows us that um, the community wants to change for the better as organizations partner with each other. And I would also like to add that CJ May um, is here and he's in support of this as well. And if you'd like to come and say a word?
So just, just real quick, uh, as Caprice has been working his way through this workforce acceleration part of it, um, uh, Sheriff Kennedy has been involved, Captain Menster from the jail, uh, and myself. And um, one, our component from the county attorney's standpoint is some of these participants may need a reduction in their sentence, or maybe they need, they might need an assignment to the residential facility. So we would see us being involved, um, probably getting some, the, a new court order, uh, so that the the, the folks can go ahead and, and get out of the jail and get to work. And I know Caprice has worked really, really hard on this and we've had several meetings where we've uh, crunched these numbers and, you know, really tried to look at this from a practical standpoint. I think we know when COVID hit a couple of years ago, many things got sidelined. Many of them didn't get back onto the field. This to me is just a real boots on the ground program. It's real straightforward. I don't think it has a lot of pie in the sky to it. I mean, it's uh, Captain Menster sent me a list the other day. I believe there's five or eight people, Caprice, right? That uh, he's identified, uh, that would be perfect candidates for this program. And one of the names ironically was a, was a young man who was in drug court and didn't, didn't make it through the program. And uh, you know, he, he walked away from the RF and picked up a new escape charge and some other charges. But, you know, he, he has many, many other qualities. Um, that program just wasn't for him. Uh, but uh, he, I, I could see him doing very well with this. Uh, and so uh, it gives me hope that, you know, we've literally identified people that are sitting in the jail as we speak that are good candidates for this very program. So I would encourage you certainly to support Caprice's request and uh, get this moving forward. I think it's a win-win for everybody, really. Thank you.
Thanks CJ.
Could I, could I ask a question CJ? So, and, and I see that Joe wants to talk too, but the request from the county for this program is fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars for this year. Is that holding up? I mean, have you been doing these things you just discussed, making these modifications and these suggestions to the court? Certainly the things you described are not being held up for fifteen thousand dollar contribution, are they?
There's, there was no other program to send these folks to and they're, they're Supervisor McDonough, the, the, the Sheriff's Department uh, doesn't oversee people for that. Um, the difference, I mean, there certainly people have work release, so they're released from the jail. They go to a job that they have. But as you well know, often when they get arrested, they lose their job. This program is for people that don't have a job. And Caprice would have jobs available for them if they complete his program. So it, it has been a funding issue, th- this type of a program. Uh, where we take people who are sitting there on whatever amount of days of their sentence and they don't have a job, but they're qualified. So um, I, I honestly, uh, Caprice can, in, in, and they've addressed the, the issues of the cost of doing this. I, and Sheriff Kennedy can probably address this a little bit from his standpoint too, but we, we did not look at it that from the county attorney's standpoint, that we would be funding any part of it. Our role was to help get these folks released from jail and get them on some type of supervision and get them in play.
No, I understand, but we're talking about a program that thinks is going to have this tremendous impact. And we're waiting for a contribution from the supervisor for fifteen thousand dollars. And this grant's been hanging around for months and months and months. I mean, I would hope that all this potential that we're talking about in, in folks who are in our jails, it's a lot of lost opportunity if this program isn't already underway. That's my comment. Seems like we could have done better from the beginning.
I just wanted to let you know that we did start this program last week. Um, just to get it up and going because we do really believe that it can be helpful. We just are doing it without the funding at this point.
Caprice, what is, on your ARP request, you have ninety-six thousand, three hundred and on that slide you had, what was it? Sixty-three thousand or something?
Yeah, sixty-three thousand. Cause we only asked for um, those dollars, the fifteen thousand for the first year, eighteen nine, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand by the um, the third year.
So the ask then is sixty-three?
Yeah, in all, for three years, for three years. And the uh, the participants are um, asked to um, contribute to the fifteen hundred dollar cost. It's fifteen hundred dollars per participant. And we're looking to scale up each year, the amount of participants. So we starting now with five to six participants for the first quarter. And then we're going to do that for the first year, you know, six, six each, each time.
And that's a great idea. Be a forward.
Yeah.
Help the next guy. I like that. Very good.
Supervisor, Sheriff Kennedy is online and would like to speak as well.
Joe?
Yeah, good morning, everybody. Thank you for uh, taking the time to um, to hear me speak and for taking the time to um, allow Caprice to present this program. Uh, it's a program that um, that we uh, we fully support on our side. Um, you know, we understand that, you know, the way the criminal justice system has, has worked, um, as long as I've been a part of it, um, you know, we've been trying to arrest our way out of problems and um, it's not really um, been the solution to a lot of, a lot of the problems that we have in our community. And so when this idea was presented about giving these inmates a way to move forward and, and uh, give themselves some uh, upward mobility financially, we, we, we got behind it. Um, you know, because we feel that a, as Caprice spoke about, you know, generational poverty and, and how that affects people. Um, you know, if you look at statistically in the criminal justice system, uh, people that are in that, that cycle of generational poverty are uh, are the largest contributors to um, to what we do uh, as an agency. And so uh, we want to, we want to try to wa- find a way to uh, reduce that number. Uh, we want to find a way to help these people. You know, get themselves in a position where they can, they can make a livable wage and not just have a job, but have a career, um, something that they can be invested in. And um, so, uh, and but as CJ said, we, when we were looking at it and they were, uh, we were trying to figure out how it was going to get funded. Um, you know, there really is not a mechanism in the sheriff's office budget uh, or the county attorney's budget, um, that, that would really allow us to be paying for, for a program like this, uh, particularly because some of these people, they may like, you know, somebody might start the program. And you know, in the fourth or fifth week, they might uh, end up getting transferred down to the Elm Street facility, or they might end up getting released. And then it's kind of on, on that person to, to continue to follow up. Um, you know, and so once they're released from our, our care and uh, from our facility, we really don't have a way um, to, to appropriately fund that. And uh, so um, you know, the funding that they're asking for is basically uh, kind of meant to get this, get this kickstarted. And then the hope is that um, you know, when we talked about people having some skin in the game, uh, our hope was, is that, you know, by having a financial component to this for the individual, that they will then um, you know, see the value in it. They'll take ownership of it. And then um, the fees that they are then paying in to, to reimburse the Fountain Youth for the program uh, truly would be, you know, a pay it forward for the next guy because that would help the next guy get funded to go into the program. And then, you know, hopefully it'd kind of be a domino after that. So um, you know, that was kind of a, the thought process behind, you know, the way uh, the way it was set up. And um, you know, like you said, I, I appreciate you taking the, the time to, to hear us out today and um, and for uh, and want to thank Caprice for the work that he's done. Uh, in addition to NICC and Iowa Workforce Development, for the work that they've done to try to help uh, get this program off the ground.
Thank you, Joe.
Any questions?
No question, just a comment. Uh, I was fortunate to, to hear your story and your vision about six years ago, maybe a little bit longer, uh, related to this. And uh, you've done really good work since then. So I congratulate you and your organization for getting this far and getting launched and and helping people in the community. And so I look forward to supporting this project.
Thank you, Jay. I appreciate that. And I just want to add this before I close out. That although we started it in the jail now, we will be doing week, starting week two tomorrow. That's not sustainable because we don't have any funding for it. So we need to be able to sustain this program because we got individuals that, look at the opportunity right here. They're getting a job straight out of jail. Once they get out of jail, they going straight to work, to all these different companies that need workers, but not just getting a worker as a body. They getting a human being that want to change their life. And they're giving the, the, the businesses is giving people a first chance, a second chance and a third chance. Because a lot of these people probably wouldn't even get these job opportunities if people know was working. Now they give them a chance through the Fountain Youth to go through a program to learn how to keep a job. So I thank you.
Thank you, Caprice. Thank you very much. That takes care of our presentations for today. Uh, there's one last thing on the agenda, discussion and possible action regarding the ARPA applications categorized under the Support Public Health Response. I think uh, what we need to do is make a determined.
Do you feel or think this would be uh, longer than fifteen minutes? If no, if so, I might need a five-minute recess. But I don't want to delay the process.
No, that's fine. Take a five-minute recess.
All right. Motion to recess for five minutes.
Um, I will second that, however. People are having tremendous difficulty hearing you and Jay are very, very weak and faint. So the discussion will not be able to be robust today if we can't fix the volume problem in the next five minutes.
We will do our best. I, I hear Supervisor Potoff very well. Um, and I certainly hear my own voice very well. So we'll, we'll attempt to make sure that everyone else can hear us.
Right. It's been, it's been in the chat box several times this morning from people.
Got it. I had a motion.
Did you second that in or? Did you second that, Anne, or?
I did.
Okay. We have a motion to second to recess for five minutes. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All right. We are in recess for five minutes. Call the Board of Supervisors back into session. As part of the work session, we have a discussion and possible action regarding the ARPA applications categorized under Support the Public Health Response. Feel that we need to come together as a board and make a determination on how much money we want to spend on the external applications, and how much money will be put towards specifically the Support the Public Health Response. I believe we have to do that before we can move forward with the funding, because we have to know what we're going to spend before we can spend any.
We will definitely.
At least.
Know the numbers this bad, yes.
At least.
Agreement, that's for sure.
Anne, your thoughts?
I think it's important to discuss the programs that we would like to have further information about. So, deciding that we're going to spend a million in each category, short changes, some projects that might need greater shares.
I understand that. Solid, but it's some kind of a guideline to follow. We still have to have some kind of guideline over the whole external application process that we have. I know there's big ass coming in. Spend it all now. Obviously, those big ass coming, I don't have enough left. Budgeting type of section thing, I would guess.
I guess if we're going to do it by category, I would say, you can see this right here for the external. And then, I would ask, how do my colleagues feel? Are these requests more important than our own county requests from our internal applicants for the same, very same topic? The very same topic, Support the Public Health Response. It might be that now that we've heard from everyone in that category, perhaps the county priorities are greater, and maybe we wouldn't award maybe anything in this first category to external applicants. I'm not saying I advocate for that, but I think that's one way to look at this. By category, how important are these requests compared to those that are coming? For instance, the restructuring of the health department. That request is one point three million dollars over three years. That's a, to me, and that's what the public tells me, is a critical department to try to grow and get right. So, how are we balancing external versus internal? The way I personally approach this is I looked at things that are achievable from external applications that are good ideas, big ideas that we can move forward on and spend modest amounts of federal funding, but that could also transition easily when necessary into our general basic fund. For instance, the Dubuque County Firefighters Program, Tom Berger is here online with us this morning, and he and I've chatted offline some about extending and making a restricted category inside the Tom Hancock Grant application, which goes very well every year, that could just be addressing recruitment and EMS certifications and training scholarships. So, that would be just an example. If you want to hear from Tom, he's here, but that would be an example where, whether we use federal funding for three years or four years, but it would be easily absorbable into our general basic to enhance the Tom Hancock Grant on an ongoing basis. I'd suggest that we could do that with a modest approach, a twenty-five thousand dollar increase to the Tom Hancock Grant for the restricted purposes that Kevin Schmidt brought specific to our attention.
I've had that conversation with Tom myself regarding the Tom Hancock Grant adding to that for the purposes of assisting with the training and recruitment. Yes, that could definitely, either way, but we fund it out of the ARP funds for three years. In the future, whether it's twenty-five, thirty, whatever number you use.
And I did talk to Kevin Schmidt as well, who's the author of our application. And it's my opinion that he would be, that he thinks that might be a mechanism that can work.
Yeah, I talked to him also, and he was in favor of that.
Yeah, as far as internal and external, high level, you know, I just think, consistent, I think we need to get through the external applications as a board. It's a government entity, asked our external partners for other ideas, we did an external survey. We owe it to the public that submitted these applications to make a decision. So, I would, not saying that the internal applications aren't awesome, but I think we should do external first, and because we ask for those. People that work for the county, they're here each and every day and have that opportunity to submit ideas and programs through their budget. So, that's kind of high level that I would like to go. And then, related to details, there's, you know, many other angles against one of these, whether you want to potentially modify an application, whether the total dollar amount, or whether methods of funding, I'm hopeful of those. But I just think we need to make decisions on those that we were given.
I think there are some things here we can do quite easily. If you look at line eighteen, the restorative strategies. There was no presentation made on that. It's my understanding that funding's been secured. It's never been, it's never been. I don't think that's a need any longer, so there, at least, and arguably, for purpose of discussion, that would be a zero. The book funding be a healthy U in school, that also was never addressed. That's line twenty. The community foundation was invited to come in, and that is not their highest priority. They told us that they wanted this to focus on line nineteen. So, for me, I strike eighteen, I strike line twenty. The volunteer recruitment, which is line twenty-two, and if you want to start putting some of these numbers in or scratching them yourself.
Wouldn't put them in on one supervisor, but we have a consensus, I would.
So, again, just going through, for example, the volunteer firefighters, that could be a twenty-five thousand dollar line, could be a grant under ARPA, could move into our budget. Going to things that I'm not likely to fund, Amos Bible College, a dishwasher, they have procured that. It's arriving this week, perhaps. That is not something I'm interested in supporting. I'm also not interested in supporting Finley Hospital, which is a privately run hospital. It also has a nonprofit component, but it does, it's part of the hospital system. Hillcrest, I think there's some wrinkle for Hillcrest to be aware of. There, Anne Cameron Williams is getting an update for us for the Fund Ten Balance projects they awarded previously. There might be funding for Hillcrest through the fact that they may not get that elevator put in because of supply issues. So, that was a hundred thousand dollar grant that we made to an elevator that may be used for access me platform expansion or repurposed to another Fund Ten program that maybe we haven't heard from yet. But, you know, those are the way I kind of look at this. Yeah?
I think maybe it'd be more advantageous if we started at the top, like you were just going through, but we get consensus on the board, and some of these could be struck, instead of, you're kind of going pretty fast, and Jay and I haven't even got a chance to say, I agree with you, where our staff can start striking some of these. That's something, like, maybe a little better way to kind of move through and at least get these thin down a little bit.
Right. And so, rather than some of these, I wouldn't outright deny, I would say we need more information. So, I'm taking a different approach, I think, than you and Supervisor Wickham might be. These are not hard yes or no's. They are that they're not, they're not ready for me to fund at this time. I think this is a three-year process where there's going to be other things that come forward. I've been contacted by the food pantry out in Dyersville. They also have needs for property, just like line twenty-three, which is the food pantry. So, I think we're going to see more requests come that are similar to these and would need to be weighted as well as we roll out from the pandemic recovery. So, I'm not saying one is a no or a yes. It's that that is not something I would bring forward to fund at this time.
Fairness and/or process that we need to honor. Ask for applicants, ask for a deadline, ask for following rules and guidelines, and all ones on this list, mine. And so, to say on this list, we're going to wait because there's might be other ones? Why did we go through all that trouble then? I just think, I disagree with that process. I think we, you know, there are other funding opportunities out there, and possibly, at least from my scorecard, unofficial, will have additional funds left over. I don't plan to authorize eighteen point nine million, you know, in external applications. So, but I think we need to make decisions, and I would make decisions independent of those new ones coming. I think that's a fair way to go. So, that's how I would proceed.
If you just start at the top, Clark University, what are your thoughts on that end?
Well, I'm a trustee there, so I would ask other people what their thoughts are.
I believe the way so that one can stay on.
Are we doing strike? Is that?
But just kind of, you know, yes, no, or defer it.
On Clark, I would be a yes of some sort of funding.
Yes.
Just to be clear, if you're striking it, would you want us, you want me to zero out? But let's think back one, two steps before we get, do we want to have more official motions in seconds? Or do you just want to have this be kind of a, keep records? That can have expectations based on our comments, our deliberations.
Yeah. It's very, very difficult to hear the board members. I don't know if everybody is having that experience, and there's a lot of white noise that is going in and out.
We're pretty loud, both of us, as you know, and I'm almost.
Actually getting an echo in here.
Yeah. This is a comment from Wayne Kenniger to everyone. Still cannot hear Jay and Harley.
We believe you. We believe you. But we're, I'm, you know, I'm talking at a really good level right into the mic.
Right. And so, because people can't hear, including me, I mean, this is a discussion that doesn't have to happen today. We're having audio difficulty.
Okay, we can put it off. That's fine. If people can't hear, obviously, that's not good either. I mean, I understand that. I just think we need to kind of move forward on. Kind of move forward on some of these before we, we have a. All three sections here applying, then you're trying to go back to remember what was said and I, I just think we need to. Make some progress on it.
I agree, and you and I agreed on that about four weeks ago. And today's the first day we're going over it. So I, I would like to get after it. So if we are delaying it again, I would like to make decisions and maybe the board members can come. With more concrete dollar amounts and yes, no, or deferred or modified.
Would we be able to put it on next week or we? All right, we can put it on again for next week and hopefully the uh, audio issues will be taken care of.
Again, is the, is the board at all interested in? Taking this worksheet, for example, that we have here and putting their thoughts down and then submitting it to our work group so that we can. Then submit it all in one fell swoop next week so that we at least have some areas of commonality identified.
I wonder if there'd be a way you could put another section on it as in uh, yes, no, or defer.
It's 2022, we can put as many sections as.
No, I mean, uh, maybe print it off or send it to supervisor and I can say yes, I feel yes. If Jay says no, you know, whatever.
But if, if we're not, I don't think our group has any interest in doing that if the supervisors and poll are not going to fill it out and, and, and get it back to us so that we have that information to work with.
I think it'd be very advantageous because you look down it and. One of them has all three supervisors approval. Okay, we know that's moving forward. If there's one there that has no supervisor approval, well, we know that one's going to be thrown out. At least we're getting the list down.
Agreed. Generally agree. Yeah, I, I would be okay with that, that general process you described.
The audio is working at this time. That's the comment that's in the chat. Do you want to try to?
What are your thoughts on that, Ann?
I'm, I'm fine with moving forward today if we can. Let's pick the things that we think we might, you then start at the stop. You both are interested in funding Clark. Is that correct?
As I could go either way on it. Yeah, I thought it was a pretty good presentation. Uh, the $74,900. Now we can move it forward uh, for that amount or if we want to have another presentation by them. Yes. What are your thoughts, Jay?
I don't want to have another presentation.
Okay.
I feel comfortable with what they prepared for us and sent to us.
Yeah, I'd be fine with the 74, 900 then, because they, their originally quest was 171, which they dropped down to uh. 74, correct?
Is, I guess I would ask my colleagues, and this is hard because I'm a trustee and the McDonough Foundation has already funded this grant. So I think they're doing good work, but I would ask you both to identify what is the top priority for you that this request fulfills? That such that you would, you would spend $75,000 of the rescue funds for that.
I guess I just felt it was a good project. I am not gonna. I thought it had merit and uh, there could be some good things that uh. Would come out of it.
I mean, as a trustee, if you don't support this project, then, then I would like to know that. That would have a lot of weight for me.
I told you I have supported it personally. I have supported this. So my question to which.
We can go around and around on every one of these. We'll be here for six years.
So for me, this project does not hit a high priority when I look at all the other things we are balancing. It is, it is work that is underway. It's going to be competent, good, meaningful work. There are other folks that we have hired to do other types of. Not the same certainly, but also research gathering. We've got the Community Foundation currently doing work for us, doing something similar. Uh, May Hinson could give you an update um, on other. Types of programs that the region is doing. So is this my highest level need? It isn't. And that's how I'm judging these. It has to meet highest level need for us to have funding. And now they're telling me that I'm talking, but nothing's coming through.
No, their, their sound is coming through. There was a moment of silence.
So that's where I am in my evaluation. So it's hard to know that it should be. So much for each category because some of these I think carry much more weight in terms of trying to get at. The difficult process of deciding highest, highest need.
And I would agree with that, Ann, but I still think we need to have some kind of guideline for the external. Group. Whether it's 4,000 or, or 4 million or 5 million that you have some guideline that say, hey. This, we're not, we're going to try not to exceed this. I mean, if we want, we can spend 10 million on this section here and we won't have to worry about the rest of them.
Right. What I don't want to be in is a situation with my colleagues where we say. Well, we said we were going to spend about this, so we haven't quite spent that in this category yet. And so let's just do this one. So everybody gets. If you treat each of these as incredibly. Um, limited resources, is this unlimited resources is number line 15 or 17 Clark University? Is this your top request? And I think that kind of tells you where you are. You could always go up and be broader later, but at this initial. Can either go very high and pare down or say, no, these are ultimately what I think are bare bones.
I guess what I'm looking at is, okay. We're saying that Jay and I somewhat support this Clark University project. In the event we find some others and we kind of got a lot spent, okay. Could we cut some out because we're over where we really want to be? Well, maybe that one isn't the top priority like you said. But at least we have something to go off of instead of nothing. You know what I'm saying? At least we could. Get the feeling on some of them, some of them, you know, will be out and see where we're at.
Go, go ahead through the list.
Well, we did the Clark, uh, the Community Foundation for the 167 for the. Restorative strategy, strategies. You said that is not, that one was funded.
For me, that is a zero. There was no presentation made on that. I understand other funding's been secured.
I'm comfortable with the zero as well.
I'm comfortable with that. Uh, the Community Foundation for the book funding be a healthy U, the next one down. Sorry, the 31,000. That was, was that funded through the ECR or?
I don't believe so, but that is one that there was no presentation made on. And so I would put that at zero.
Okay.
Yep. Part of their funding request had book funding in it. I can't remember if that was.
That's the next one.
They had, but uh, I'm comfortable at zero.
Uh, then the Community Foundation, Every Child Reads is 600,000.
I would like to move that on to further consideration at that dollar amount until we get it right. We need to invite some other partners. I think that's, that unfortunately for folks who just want to make a rapid decision, I think that's not where it should be. That's one I think we should continue to explore. It's countywide, it's high level need. We need to find out what our other taxing authorities are intending to do. We just haven't had the right people in the room yet.
Well, they've been here three times and we spent a couple hours. Um, so I feel I understand what they're trying to accomplish. Um, I, I think it's, you know, wonderful. I think we need to improve grade reading. I'm not sure that it's the county's role and responsibility through ARPA funds to do that. So I'm less inclined on those high dollar amounts for that program. Not saying it'd be a zero, but it would be significantly less. And it would not be a high priority for me.
What number would you think?
Go ahead, Ann. I'm sorry I covered you a little bit.
I asked for Supervisor Wickham's number as we try to move this forward.
Well, you know, it'd be zero unless I get a little more convincing from my other two colleagues.
Well, you, you said you had it, but nowhere at this dollar amount. So I'm not sure which it is.
I just said zero. Did you not hear that?
Okay, so then that's where we are with that. That's a zero. Harley, where are you?
It would, I would be in favor of some funding. The 600,000 would be uh. Pretty high. Uh, just had some phone calls. Last week regarding that request and. A little disappointed in. How this came about, to be very honest. Uh. So there, there's going to be a lot of discussion over that one yet, but for the time being, it can stay in, but it's obviously not going to be at the $600,000 level. And I'm, I agree with Jay, they, I'm not sure that. The county should be funding. All of this, uh, the school district. Has to be involved in this too, or as we had said before, have to have some skin in the game because. It's an issue that affects the whole county and the city. So.
Right.
We'll move down to the Dubuque County Fair Association, Ballroom System Replacement and Ballroom Rough Replacement.
I'm at $100,000 for that program. I think we need to be a good partner. They have made great progress. And they've begun the replacement of some of those at this time.
I, I would definitely support uh, 100,000 if not higher uh, for that. So I think we're, we're gaining some good consensus. Supervisor Potoff?
I would be in consensus with that.
Up the 100 grand or?
Put it down for 100,000 now. And we can revisit it. That's not a problem. Uh, the Dubuque County Firefighters Recruitment Thing, uh, we had discussed that. 25,000 a year for the three years out of ARP and then uh, after that, maybe the. While the county would pick it up, it'd be just for uh, recruitment and training EMS uh. Personnel for the volunteer fire departments.
Would you be interested in, in multiple years at 25,000? So we've, we've got.
How far out could we go with the ARP?
2026. The 2026.
If I, if I might just jump in there, my idea would be to do 25 and to revisit it every year. There's a possibility that it won't be used or the full 25 won't be used. And as this rolls out, we might actually see if that's the right number. At this point, we're just speculating that 25,000 is enough. Or so, I mean, we probably got some work to do there, but. I don't know if you want to.
I'd agree with that, Ann. That's a good idea. Just probably a yearly type thing. See how it, how it's going to get used.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important to, for supervisors to distinguish whether it's the whole amount or. An annual amount when we're modifying these because we do have funding opportunities. And then if we're going to review those on a yearly basis, I'm. Comfortable with that process. I'd just like it to be known, so.
Say that one, I think, uh, you know, some years they may have more recruits and maybe need a little more money and. The next year they may not have any and need none. So, I mean, it's kind of tough to. I guess the money would be there. If they don't use it, it comes back, but.
I would encourage my colleagues to see the video that American Red Cross did about the young firefighter in Bernard who received an American Red Cross. Hero Award. There's a fantastic video that's been produced that's running around on, on Facebook, but um. I think that video itself does a lot of things if we could promote it for recruitment. I mean, I'm not a firefighter personally, but it's a very touching video. Um, well, very well done about the young man in Bernard.
Thank you.
Yep, I saw that and pushed it around the 100,000 views of, around Iowa.
I guess just put it down for 25,000. We'll go to the Dubuque Food Pantry, Expansion of the Dubuque Food Pantry, 278,000.
So just for high level comment on that, they can, they intend to continue to own the building they currently operate out of. And it would then become a revenue source for them. There are apartments upstairs that they rent and they would rent out the building. Um. So that's a question to my colleagues. How do you feel about them owning income producing asset? Um, when they're asking us for um, assistance in their new building?
My, my quick response would be is if we're going to look at income and assets, uh. The Community Foundation, which we funded multiple times, has more assets actually than the county does related to liquid cash assets. So I, I don't, I don't see that as a consideration. Um. You know, I think I look at the, the need and the programs and uh, whether they fit the, our priority. And for, for me, this one does. At what dollar amount? I'm not 100% sure, but I, but I see it as a, as a bear. I see it as a, as a required need uh, in our county.
So what would number would you propose?
I think I just said I don't know what number I would propose at this time.
I would be in favor of funding it to some extent. I'm, I also am not certain on a number, whether it's. 200,000 or 175,000, but something probably in that area. I'd be interested. And you, Ann?
Um, well, I know there's going to be a request coming from, also from Dyersville for a very similar need.
Oh, we have 19.8, so I would, I would be generally in favor of saving a little bit for Dyersville when, when we get through this process.
So I'm not sure what number I would be there either.
Supervisor Potoff, what was your numbers again? Did you say 100,000?
I said 175 to 200.
I, I'm comfortable with those letter, those levels. So I think you have consensus on that. So do you want to go with the lower or the higher one? Because it's a spreadsheet. Ann?
I'm sorry. I thought that was a question to you, Harley.
Oh, it was, but that.
I put it down for 175. We can raise it if we feel.
I'm comfortable with that.
Uh, Dubuque Visiting Nurse Association, the VNA Representative, PAYE Enhanced Case Management and Educational Courses. Ask is for 76,560.
This one was a little more challenging for me to, to look at as, as far as an external, just because they've been an ongoing. Contract resource with the Department of Health for, for many years. Um. I don't recall the Department of Health and their, the health board, excuse me, um, their take on this. But you know, I, my quick thought would be that's where this belongs. Or as a recommendation uh, or. A recommendation from them. Board of Health.
This is a PAYE program. Um, so if you want to get the Board of Health's input, that's fine. I don't think we. Currently contract with them on this. Um, McDonough Foundation has founded. Uh, has funded the, the PAYE program there for several years. Um. Uh, but I don't think it meets my highest level of priority um, coming out of the pandemic.
So you would suggest not funding, Ann, or?
I guess I would let that be to my colleagues.
I would. I would think it should be under the Board of Health personally because that's where most of the VNA uh, runs through. I would think it should be under the Board of Health personally, because that's where most of the VNA runs through.
Can I take this? Is it okay then if we put a zero in there, but then, you know, let the record reflect that we'd like to, you know, ask the Board of Health for a review and recommendation?
Yeah.
When when they see fit, you know, it could be with their internal recommendations or outside. Does that sound like a good path forward?
That sounds good to me. You good with that, Anne?
No, it doesn't have anything to do with the Health Department. These are folks that are in need. It's more like the Disabilities Council, quite honestly.
I would generally agree with that, too. So I, you know, I understand these are social security disability clients and, you know, trying to manage that. You know, there's a crossover.
It also might fit if there's funding left from Fund Ten. So I would leave it. I'd keep it alive. Not discount it, but it might be something that picks up dollars from unspent Fund Ten balances here.
This spreadsheet's ARPA, and so I think are we comfortable as a board putting zero on that?
No.
Okay, we've got, I'm a, I'm a yes.
What do you want to? What are you thinking for a number, Anne?
I think it should be deferred. There's more work to do on this.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, that's what I mentioned, and then you kind of kicked that off. So, okay.
Next to be the AMAS Bible College.
Well, let's backtrack.
Oh, oh, sorry, sir.
Because who do you want to defer to Supervisor McDonald?
It's going to stay alive for us, actually, the Board of Supervisors. So as Fund Ten becomes clear, we're going to have a report from Dr. Anne Cameron Williams on Monday of next week. I've asked her to try to get something to us then. All of those a million dollar in commitments have to be billed and out the door in Fund Ten by June thirtieth. And it doesn't look like all of that's going to happen. So we need to have, I think, some other things that we might need to rapid fund so that we're not returning any of our fund balance to the region or state.
I agree with everything you said. I'm just maybe a little more procedural. We've got a document the public's looking at for ARPA funding and not Fund Ten and other ones. So I would just want to be clear on our categories and what we're presenting.
So that.
I'm not saying I'm burying it, but if the board right now is zero at ARPA, that's what it should be. And they would certainly have eligibility to all of these on the list to try to go through other funding portals that become available or are available.
We could leave another column that says or add one that says undetermined at this time.
If that's where the board's at, that's not where I'm at really at ARPA funds.
It's kind of like the punch list when you build a new house. You always end up with some things you have to check back on.
You would have the right to do that regardless. Until eighteen point nine is coming out. I mean, this, you know, I don't believe the federal government's going to come back and say, hey, you guys said you're going to do this. You can't do that two years later if you still have funding. I mean, this this isn't ever an absolute process.
Yeah, we can just leave it as it is and it'll be alive yet. We'll see what happens with ECR and not that it affects the ARP thing, but if it would get funded through there, it would be off of here, so.
Right. And you do want to look here up the caption. It does say Dubuque County ARPA request after MH fund balance and POS award. So I mean, we are we're understanding this is all still a document in motion.
Right. Okay, we'll move to the next one. The AMAS Bible College Dining Hall Dishwasher, thirty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. I think Anne had indicated she was not interested in funding that when we got down here the first time.
I work with I work with the MAES. They are good people. They make great employees for our community, but this is not a high priority for me under any of these balances.
I would have to agree with that. Just doesn't raise to the level of use of the ARP funds that I was looking for.
Is is that a polite way of saying zero?
Yes.
Okay.
For me, it was. Any other thoughts?
I'm comfortable with zero on that. I learned more about AMAS Bible College and their, you know, community outreach program, which was very good. I'm glad I learned that. But the dishwasher does not meet my visions for American Rescue Funds.
So we all have consensus on zero for that. Next is the Finley Hospital Public Health Preparedness Initiative. Did you want to start on that, Anne?
Well, I'm going to make some people that are friends unhappy, but these are costs that they are asking us to share that are their responsibility, in my opinion. And I put that both as my fundraiser philanthropic hat and, of course, in due diligence and vetting for taxpayer funding. So I'm not interested in supporting that request.
I am agreeing with you on that. Obviously, I know there will be people upset that aren't getting funding, but again, there's sixty million dollars in requests for eighteen point nine million. So there's going to be several people not happy that they're not getting funding, but we are not Santa Claus and President Biden didn't give us sixty million. So we have to justify where the money goes. I would be a zero on that one.
Supervisor McDonald, were you at zero on that as well?
I I was. Where are you?
We have two zeros. We have a consensus. You know, my my vantage point from overall health is that would be one of the higher priorities. And, you know, the federal government has probably is in the trillions related to, you know, health preparation and obviously pandemic preparation, I would think would be important to fund with federal funds. Now, it wasn't glamorous, you know, it was an extra room. It was extra mass, extra stuff. But if you remember all the difficulties we had when those weren't available and the quantities we needed, the last time we went through this, it was painful. So I I would see it as something I would want to fund with federal funds. That said, that's a, you know, I'm not, keep keep in mind, I'm not trying to shame anyone. And if it's zero, I understand, you know, both your comments. But that's where I'm at.
So for this one in particular, when you talk about the response with the federal dollars, I I set this up exactly opposite the request from the Board of Health for people to fill gaps in our county, services that the county was not able to provide. And I don't think that renovating a room at Finley Hospital at Unity Point, which just added on a few years ago, a multimillion dollar expansion, that is not the same priority. So that's where I am in the in the public response to a possible pandemic resurgence, even in the fall. There's trillions of dollars out there, certainly for hospitals to do these things that they're asking of us. And it's been proven, in fact, because the request came down as they fund things. So I don't, you know, I I don't want to be seen as not providing for the public health response. It's just on a different page of paper.
Yeah, I get it. I wasn't attempting to make either of you, you know, justify your position. You asked for my opinion. That's that's what it was. But I think we had, you know, unless either of you two change, it's I'm majority rules. I'm very pleased with that process, so.
Supervisor Wickham, what number do you want to put there?
Doesn't matter if we have two zeros.
Well, it matters to the people listening.
Once we have consensus, unless either of you two are moving, and if you're asking for, you know, consideration to change that, if you're going to change your mind, I can talk further. But if it's we have two zeros, just like if we had two full fundings, the decision's made.
Well, I would.
Good.
I'd be willing to listen to your points. I I was more with Anne that we're building on a building that's just been constructed and more storage.
For for me, it's more category, the categories, you know, and so so health. And so when you're looking at health, I mean, Finley Hospital's right there, Mercy One's right there. Some of the other ones a little less, okay? So the dishwasher's a couple steps removed and, you know, food pantries are, you know, obviously have to have food to live, but they're they're they weren't pandemic specific. So anyway, I I'd see, you know, Mercy and Finley being key components of receiving funding. They're the the key largest institutions in Dubuque County serve the needs of of Dubuque County's health needs. I don't claim to be a health expert. I don't claim to say that it's going to stop the next pandemic or make us fully prepared. But we've received federal fundings. We've asked for external applications. And when two of the largest respective groups you know, ask for funding, and there's a couple others, certainly medical associates, so on and so forth, but I would tend to want to provide them some level of funding. But keep in mind, I'm not trying to sell this for Finley. I don't think that's my role. So I mean, we both, we heard the same presentations. It's more of my view of of where the funding would go.
My concern is that after consensus has been reached and then you come in with comments that make it seem as though you know better. I want you to be fully at the table with us right now and making your and making your comments known to educate me. That's helpful.
I was quiet. You asked for my comments. I'm happy to move on.
Would we want to keep that one alive for further discussion or zeros? I'd be willing to entertain further discussion on it, see where we end up. You know? Would that be work for my colleagues?
I think what we probably should do there is pull up their budget request and look specifically into what it is that they want us to fund at this time. I think it was two hundred and forty thousand dollars to renovate some space so that they could store PPE, a robot that disinfects that every facility has at this time that was reaching end of life. And some equipment for nurse call lights for an experience that they had previously in the pandemic. So that might be something, you know, we could look at these specifically to see what it is that we'd be we're being asked to fund. Maybe if we, I'll be sarcastic, but maybe if we add on a room for them to store PPE, they would name it Dubuque County.
I did just read the request, and I know you're right on the robot to clean and the room for the no, I can't find the request here. All right there.
I think the check ultimately would be written to Unity Point. Isn't that who wrote the application?
I believe you are correct, Anne.
I mean, they they're not wrong to ask us for assistance, but it is part of a hospital system where big bonuses are paid.
Ojo for lab testing equipment.
That was already funded.
Infection prevention, powered air purifying respirators.
It's the remaining priorities that they needed funding from us. Probably all four of those root needs exist inside Crescent Health Center. They probably exist inside Sunny Crest.
Yeah, I think we'll face that on many of the applicants is that there's other players that could have received funding. The applications were open, known to the public and were, you know, readily available for anyone and everyone to apply. So when we requested them and we requested them with a set of rules and they're in front of us.
So Supervisor Wickham, which of those would you like to fund?
I think items related to the pandemic seem to make the most sense to me. I don't claim to know anything about disinfecting robots, but it was in their application. They must think it's important. You know, certainly COVID, inpatient care, the vital signs equipment, kind of the those areas. But you know, I I think if I had to, if I had to just pick one today and, you know, we're at zero before and and, you know, we wanted to move off of that, I would say item number one, which is two forty-two seven. But, you know, I I appreciate the board's consideration for my comments. My intent was not make to make us dive into this further or to, you know, change anyone's number.
I certainly wouldn't would not join you in doing a renovation for them.
And I would agree with Anne on that, Jay. I just I'd have a hard time doing a renovation for them. I just I think it's a lot of money for you know, they just did a renovation. Yes, yes. And it's going to be difficult like this all the way through. You know, it's there's not going to be any many easy ones to decide on what to do. If we knew the future, it'd be easy. You know, the COVID thing is seems like it's behind us. Are we going to get hit with another wave? Well, if the COVID thing is going to be behind us, well, do we really want to keep spending money on? I don't know. About we just keep it alive and move it forward, just put down a hundred thousand for now? Would you be good with that, Anne, or?
No, based on Supervisor Wickham's comments about high priority for storage area, I'm back at zero.
That wasn't my comment. So, you know, I didn't say it was a high priority for me. The overall health response is a high priority for me. But I think we're back to zero again. So you guys are the ones that keep keeping this alive.
I think it does have potential, but I said I'm just not very interested in building storage areas. I think I would go Jay and keep it alive. I don't know that I would be funding to the two hundred and fifty thousand, but if to keep it alive for right now, I would say I'd be in the hundred thousand range where they help them out, but that would be about my extent.
If if that's a a level I'm I'm comfortable with a hundred thousand.
Yeah, I'll just keep moving forward for now. Hillcrest Family Services Qualified Opportunity Zone, three hundred and forty thousand. Like to start?
I'll be happy to start. I've looked at this multiple times. I'm very intrigued. It's very innovative. It it kind of gets my brain moving. But that said, I don't know if But that said, I don't know if we could pull it off in our Dubuque Metro and to be one of the first to do it in a, and we're still a small community. It's not that we don't have great people. We just don't have a lot of times the economic engine and the prospective people that would invest in and and make that investment so that you could get the return in earnings to be able to to have additional funds to offer brain health services. And so it's 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 a it's a long tail. And so at this point, I would be I would be at a zero for that.
And do you think there's any uh possibility of ECR fund balance movement on that or?
I don't know that it qualifies for ECR and they've never, as as he's told us, they've never applied ECR for this. So I'm a zero.
I was at a zero on that also, so that can go down to zero. Hillcrest Family Services Access Me Care Platform Expansion, 232-866.
We did fund $78,000 of this request through the fund balance.
It was three hundred and some prior, right?
Right.
Two thirty-two is what's left.
And so at best, what I would do is move this forward into a yet to be determined file, which I have. Um, I have that as a category because I think that um they should apply to the region for funding for this. Mike Fidgen told us they had not. They should. And um, there's $2 million being returned by the region to the state of Iowa. And I also think um this might be a potential catchall if they don't get their elevator uh their elevator, which is a hundred thousand dollars if that doesn't come about.
Right. Uh, I'd want them to complete the Access Me Care Platform. And with the elevator issue, uh, it's more of a supply issue, not them not trying to get it done. They were supposed to check on the one up in Mount Pleasant, too, but I'd never heard back on that one, but I think that's kind of a supply issue also.
Yeah, Anne's checking with both of those, Harley. She's going to have a report for us next week.
All right. So I would I would be willing to move that ahead at the cost of two thirty-two eight sixty-six for the time being.
So move that head, meaning approve?
Approve, yes, for two thirty-two eight sixty-six, but with the fund balance, we give them, we've given them a hundred dollars for a hundred thousand for the elevator. But if they can't get the elevator in by June 30th, they could be able to use that hundred thousand to put towards this. Correct, Dan?
I that will require, we have to go back to the region to get that done. So we'll know more then, but I am not I am, I'm moving this forward. I'm not moving it forward with an approval behind it. I'm moving it forward to see. I think it needs more time to see who's going to fund what. And I do think they should apply to the region.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll move that one ahead.
Okay with that?
Next, Mercy One Dubuque Foundation Improving Brain Brain Health Access, one million dollars.
They brought it, yeah. Go ahead.
For mobile, for mobile.
This is the mobile unit.
Yeah, which I was very pleased with them getting it out in the community and 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 doing testing and uh vaccinations and other other items. So I uh I would be generally supportive of this. Um, it also seems to be new and innovative. Um, at what level, I'm not sure if a million dollars is the right amount. Might be a hair high for me, but I would generally be supportive.
Ann?
Their request was for a hundred thousand dollars for a three-year commitment. $100,000 for each year. I think that's what Melissa Springer said by the end of her presentation.
Can you bring that up, Ed? I thought there was 300,000 over three years. But there was some of that barriers to care thing, which I guess they did reduce it to the 300,000, 100,000 a year for three years, if I'm not mistaken. Did that sound right, Ann?
That's what my notes are, yes. That was a presentation on February 28th.
Yep, thank you. Your thoughts, Ann?
Well, I'm the, I actually wanted to uh to fully support them for brain health um under Fund 10. So I um, I also think the the Health Board could potentially weigh in on this one to defer it to somebody else who might know. There's experts on our Board of Health that might have an opinion about uh the value of this. Certainly, if there's a fourth booster, this is going to be a large window into the community to provide that fourth booster shot. So I support this program and have um from the first time I heard about it.
Well, I'd be supportive of the 300,000, 100,000 here for the three years.
Supervisor McDonough had mentioned going to the Board of Health. Is that something you would be in favor of Supervisor Pata?
Oh, for uh
getting their recommendation or review or feedback, something along those lines?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Yeah.
I'm I'm good with that. I mean, this is, you know, a perfect scenario why we have a or supervisor liaison. And uh, you know, it's on the agenda each each month.
What is it that you want me to do for you, Jay?
Uh, just honor your request. You said you'd like to have the Board of Health's feedback.
So that was an opportunity if if we as a board want to have their input?
I think I think we have consensus. I think all three of us said yes.
We have consensus with that, Ann.
Yeah, I think all three of us said yes, and I just added the comment that we have a liaison and that's a good reason. I'm glad we have a liaison and we have a mechanism to communicate to the Board of Health.
So because this is coming from all three of us, perhaps we could put something in writing. Ed, do you want to draft something from the Board of Supervisors to the Board of Health? They're they are really working on lots of issues right now and maybe put together something about the the um Mercy One Mobile Unit. Maybe they're going to have a presentation themselves. Maybe you can see how they would like to be informed and then inform us.
Yes, thank you Supervisor McDonough. This is Ed Raiber and um in my notes here, I anticipate that I will reach out to uh the uh Health Director there, um letting her know the background and the conversation here and that you are seeking some input from the board that she serves and that they they meet on Wednesday night. So this is not on the agenda, but certainly that could be a discussion point and I'll leave it to the Health Director to pass along what she'd like to the Board of Health and um I assume that you will be at the meeting on Wednesday evening to hear that discussion. Is that a is that acceptable, you know?
Sure, that's good. It's it's too late, I think, to be on the agenda.
Right, just making sure of it. Yeah, I I think you categorize it well and whether it's this month or next, I I'd be wonderful.
There's not a super big hurry on it, but uh, next is the Matt Clinic that was paid for to purchase a service. Excuse me. Next, we have Northeast Iowa Agency on Aging Senior Brain Health, 25,000.
If I might, this seems like a modest request. The difficulty is is that I really don't want to give any funding to this agency for their administrative fees until they have worked with someone who's going to be the Iowa Cafe. So the difficulty is finding the restaurant that will be the Iowa Cafe in Dubuque County. And while I like that idea, I think there are some barriers that they might be able to help alleviate. So if we pursue this, I think it's got to have some caveat or trigger mechanism in when the gift would be made, when the funding would be made, because um I don't want it to just go to administrative fees for a project that never begins.
I am in favor of the Iowa Cafe thing. I would be in favor of the funding. And we can put some caveats to that, that obviously there'd be no funding until they get the location secured and up and running, something to that effect. That I I'm with you on a lot of this money being spent for administrative uh stuff. I'm not a big fan of that, but I know obviously there are costs associated with a lot of it, but the money needs to go where it's going to make a difference, not into the pockets of organizations, so. Jay, your thoughts?
Yeah, it's something I would fund as well. I think it's modest at at 25,000 and I would disagree with any of my colleagues' comments, so I'm not sure what that means, though. I'm kind of confused if that's a yes on 25,000.
Yeah, I was at 25,000.
Okay, and I'm I'm comfortable at that level.
I believe Ann was too, correct, Ann? Yep. All right. Next is Operation Empower Liberty Recovery and Training Center, 495,500. I believe it was 260-some thousand one year, something like that. It's over two years. Who would like to start on that?
I think we previously funded them at 150,000 is my memory. I don't know if anyone can help me out or yeah, confirm that. Um, and that was to kind of get get launched, get going, and they've done that. So they have they have the facilities up and running. They've got uh, you know, both areas, the residential and then the kind of the front side of the house for for counseling and and meeting uh set up. And so and they've also secured $3 million in state federal money to to get that done. So I would see this as as being a a priority for housing um and then for substance abuse, brain health uh recovery. And so I would be very interested in funding. I don't know if it's a full dollar amount. How many people are going to get the full dollar amount? But uh I would be uh or close to the full dollar amount, if not uh at that level. So I'm I'm a supporter of this project.
Did you want to go, Ann, or do you want me to go, or?
Go ahead, Harley.
I also would be in support of this uh project. It is a needed area. Uh, after 33 years in law enforcement and senior recidivism where uh presented people into treatment, they come home and they go right back to where they had the issues and it all starts over again. I think this gives us a place where people can go to be safe and hopefully really make a difference. Uh Michelle has done has secured a lot of funds. The building is outstanding. Uh the new building, uh 22nd, and uh it, I really think this is something where we would, we would be setting uh a precedent for the state. So I would be in favor of the funding and even if it wasn't the total amount, it I would be at the high end of that amount.
So what dollar amount do you think for the first year?
Uh, probably that, I don't have it written down what her thing was. I'd have to go back and look. I think it was 200, I think the first year was 260, wasn't it? And then like 260 and 235 or something to that effect, so.
I think it's right there.
Yes, it's 291.5 for the year one and 204 for year two. Where would you be on the funding for the first year, Jay?
I I would be at the 291.500 for first year request.
Ann?
Well, I think you need to look at here what they're asking for. So it's people, we're funding their staffing. We don't have a budget that shows that they have any revenue, so I'm concerned about that. I'm I'm concerned and that's why I asked for information to confirm that this is an enterprise that can continue. I have some concerns about that. These same people, again, staff people, could be the staff funding that we use for our county public health department. So it's a matter of, is this our same takeaway? Is this how much we're willing to invest in our own program enhancement at the county? We don't have support people right now to work with this organization for substance use programming. Anne Cameron Williams is going to begin this program July 1st to be the first person ever as a staff person for the county to actually look at substance use. So we don't, we are not ready to quite go with this yet. I think it's a worthwhile project. I just am not satisfied that I've seen the financial information.
Anne Cameron is not going to be a licensed social worker.
You're right.
These are, these are therapists, whatever, help people. I I understand what Anne's taking over, but this is actually working with the clients keep them on that path forward. Uh, even the Department of Health isn't I don't see any of the new positions that they're bringing up that would be able to help anything in this project.
A third of the funding is for for capital, not people. And so the other two thirds are are for people, which are very important. I like funding people. Um, we we didn't ask applicants for, you know, operational budgets, and so we haven't asked others for that. That said, I I don't think the request is that difficult and I would be confident that it could be provided. Uh, but uh, you know, I would I would be looking at the 291.500 at this point. I think that that's a good first year and then we can, you know, hold other funds. We will have some nuances, though, just not necessarily just on this one, but other ones of what we're appropriating. So we'll we'll need to, you know, the 18.9 million is is a set amount. And so if we're deciding on 291.500, if we never get to year two and we exhaust, obviously, the full amount, then there is no year two for ARPA funds. So we'll have to figure out what our first year funding means, if this is really a hard stop or if we're actually budgeting for year two possibilities and just making those decisions uh in just that a year from now. But that said, I'm I'm supportive of year one and uh I think it's a very worthwhile project.
I would I would be supportive of the year one, 291.5, and we can check back on year two for future funding if needed. Uh, the Salvation Army of Dubuque Mobile Kitchen and Emergency Disaster Relief, 51,438. I believe that was for a vehicle that they would be able to take to areas of disaster like where the tornado were was, but they would have a kitchen in. I personally would be in favor of the 51,438. Ann?
I am not interested in fully funding this.
Okay. Where would you be sitting at a number?
Well, I was actually Well, I was actually at zero. It's not the highest. It's not the highest priority for me. It is not. They are going to be, they have other fundraising mechanisms they can use. This vehicle is going to travel outside our area. And, you know, the rescue mission has a vehicle similar to this that's already on the road.
Okay. I would be generally in favor of of the funding. I think having a a local unit like this ready to be deployed uh is what we'll need in disaster relief. You you see what's happened in in western Iowa uh on on the tornadoes and obviously the derecho and other ones. We we've been much more fortunate in Dubuque here the last series of years. Um but our days might be numbered and we might need something like this. So I I would see it as a a good use of American Rescue Funds. And so I'm I'm comfortable at the the fifty-one, four thirty-eight number.
That's where I would be at. I'd be, I wouldn't have an issue with funding that. Salvation Army does a lot of good and that's what this is about, doing good. We'll move to Saint Patrick's Catholic Church, feeding the underserved, twenty thousand, four hundred. That was for a new freezer and setup, I believe. That again, I would be interested in funding. It's a relatively minor amount. And there is a lot of good coming out of it with the uh free meals that they cook and serve up. Comments?
I would agree with everything you said. Uh I am from Epworth and originally my first twenty-plus years, Saint Patrick's Parish in Epworth. Um Mr. Gavin, I think, did a fine job just, you know, saying, here's what we've done in the past with little or no effort. Um assuming this, you know, fulfills the re- assuming we have compliance. Uh I don't know if we've we've had direct funding to an actual parish before, but assuming we have compliance for funding, I would support the full amount.
Supervisor McDonough?
Uh the McDonough Foundation has funded this organization in the past. It's very, so they do good things. They do good work. This is a need. It's unfortunate that um the need wasn't met through private philanthropy because I think it probably could have been um like at this point, there's no going back. So the county should step in and get this done because it just needs to be completed.
Are you supportive of the twenty thousand, four hundred?
Yeah, I won't vote. No, it has to get done.
Okay. All right, that will wrap up uh the initial run-through of them. Uh we have some that are still pending, some uh that we've we've made some progress. I thank my colleagues for uh
Yeah.
their input. Uh I know we're, it's gonna be a long process, but we have to start someplace, so.
I'd like to go back and talk about the six hundred thousand dollar for the reading program. I'd like to know what the status is of that. There are a lot of people who are anxiously awaiting direction from us and we just left it as a dash.
I think there is. I received some phone calls regarding uh one of the entities that were supposedly a partnership in that. And they didn't know anything about it. That kind of causes me some concern because I I would think if you're going to put in an application for six hundred thousand and say you're partnering with an organization, that you should probably talk to that organization before you put in the application. Seems a little questionable at best and a little disappointed in how that has played out. I know the Community Foundation does a lot of great things, but in this instance here, that's not, it's not very transparent, I don't believe. I don't know if any of the other supervisors got calls from this individual or not.
I don't know what individual you're talking about. Certainly, I've talked to major stakeholders who believe that the success of the reading program and the countywide reading program is right here. And that this would make a tremendous difference to children in the community and to addressing future workforce needs. Um I don't want to look back in hindsight and wish we'd taken action when we had the funding available to be a partner with them.
And I understand that. Uh the Fountain of Youth is Robert Kimball is who contacted me.
That's that's the Dream Center.
Or Dream Center, I'm sorry. The Dream Center and uh he had a letter of support that was sent to him by the Community Foundation, which stated that he supported the summer reading program, which yes, that would be a good idea. Kind of neglected to tell him he was gonna be handling it. That's kind of a problem. Even this is even after they had put the application in. He just found out a little while, a couple of weeks ago, in my understanding, that they wanted him to handle this, which he has no problem doing. But he thinks it kind of makes him look like he's doing something wrong because he didn't know about this.
Hmm. I had a long conversation with Robert last week, too, and 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 that is not my takeaway. My takeaway is extremely different than your assessment about that. He's supportive of it. He asked me, quite frankly, if I thought this was the path to success for his program. And I told him I thought it was, that this is the way for them to grow. Um so I think it's maybe we're listening for different things perhaps, but I found him to be very supportive and certainly he signed the letter.
I understand he signed the letter. I have a copy of the letter. But if I'm gonna ask you for a letter of support, I would have you write the letter. I wouldn't write the letter for you and then send it to you and have you sign it.
Well, I mean, I think the foundation's even some even assisted him in writing the application he sent to us for his fun ten funding. So there's a history there of people, I mean, I've signed letters of support that people have prepared for me.
Right, but I don't I looked very good at what he was supporting after I read the letter. And I just, he had no idea with this, every child reads, that he he was a partner in this, to put on this, put up the space for, he agrees that it's it's a great idea. There's no, there's no doubt about that. It's just kind of the way it it was brought about. Didn't seem very transparent to me.
So, right. So if if he agrees and thinks it's a need, is is that, do you think Robert would be pleased that we're not moving forward because of a comment that he made?
I have no problem with giving Robert money for the program. I don't know why I'd wanna give the Community Foundation the fifty thousand that they're gonna give to Robert, which they're gonna keep an administrative fee out. I'll just give Robert the money and he can do the program. Sorry, I'm not trying to be rude. Kind of like, it's kind of wasting money because I'm sure the Community Foundation want their twelve percent out of the fifty that they're gonna give to him when I can just give him the fifty and he has the whole fifty.
So when we look at the whole reading program countywide, is that the number that you'd be at, Harley, is fifty thousand dollars?
That would be for the Dream Center, because that's the, the Community Foundation was gonna give the Dream Center fifty thousand. But why don't I just give the Dream Center the fifty thousand and he can handle that portion of it? The Community Foundation can still do what they need to do out in the county. I think there's another one for twenty-five thousand for, was it Saint Pat's? Meeting their youth group or something?
Saint Mark's.
Or Saint Mark's.
Mark's is what somebody said.
They
It seems pretty high. If you take the fifty, whatever, a hundred thousand off of it, it seems like a lot of money to organize some meetings to try to get this going in the county. And even the information they put out, this helps for two to three years. After that, drops right off. The reading.
Right.
It's not a long-term cure. It's
I disagree with you about that. And obviously, I think this is a very high priority for the community and it's a community program, whether it's six hundred thousand dollars or it's not. Um that's still, I guess, the question. Is this still a possibility? I think Nancy said the barest it could be is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get it to be able to be operational for three years, to get something in place that works to so this is a solution, a local solution to something that helps children read in our community. And right now, we're at a fifty percent. Um at least in the Dubuque Community School District, about fifty percent. And it's it's higher in the in the, when we talk about vulnerable communities, Marshall East Children, it's eighty-eight percent are not reading at grade level. That is a, that's an alarming number and the school district is saying that they would, they would welcome a partnership to try to make this whole.
Yeah, certainly certainly reading and reading at grade le- level is is important and and critical. Um what what I am maybe confused by or maybe gives me lack of conviction for this funding is that if that's so, a- all these other entities, as I've mentioned, other meetings have American Rescue Funds as well, in a larger amount than we do. And they're in education, Western Dubuque and Dubuque Community School Districts. That's their core concept. Education is not really one of the state core functions of of county government. Um secondly, you know, if the city of Dubuque's gonna benefit, oh, they have funding larger than we do as well. Greater Dubuque, you mentioned them. They have funding as well. And and this, at the end of the day, is administration. And I know that's a component that is needed, but it it just doesn't uh jump off the page of a priority for me, and particularly when it's in the public health response, that kind of gives me some confusion as well. And so I I I don't see this at this moment, related to how the application is, uh as something I would be interested in funding.
Well, I guess I just want to make sure the record is clear that some of this funding, I think more than a hundred thousand dollars of it, would pass straight through to Saint Mark and to um the Dream Center. So whether that comes through with us as maybe that's removed from the administrative request, but this isn't just for administrative funding. This is for programming costs as well. When you ask Supervisor Whittem, you ask Nancy Van Milligan whether any of these mon- funds would go directly to one-on-one instruction. Her response was that they don't do that instruction. They don't do that work. But I know that this request includes funding for those very important partners.
And I would be with Supervisor Potoff um in evaluating those on a one-on-one basis. And we have funded in the past for educational-related items for both Saint Mark's and for the Dream Center. So I would be happy to support that again.
So then what is the number here? Well, seriously, is it going to get better? Is it gonna get worse? Let's let's have the courage to put the number there.
I think I would not be interested in funding that. That's zero. I mean, because, I mean, when you're asked for the revision of this, uh it's zero for me. And I was suspecting the first go-around and you asked for a second. I don't think I can be any clearer.
Well, I appreciate the clarity. Supervisor Potoff, where are you?
I would be below the four hundred thousand, four hundred and fifty thousand. Uh it is something that it is needed, but I kind of agree with Jay. It's it's a problem created kind of with, by the COVID, but it's also a school problem. It's a schooling issue, you know. I'm not, I'm not a teacher. I read with my kids. I, you know, read them stories at night, whatever. Uh I'm trying to get around in my head how this is going to work and I I can't see how it's going to work. I just, unless the schools are really involved, because they're talking transportation, they're talking all this other stuff, well, if you have the schools involved, the schools have buses. Guess what? They can haul people. You know, yeah, it costs money. I understand that. But it is, it still goes back to it's a school function. And the school's tax. I'm sorry, go ahead, Anne.
Well, the thing is that Joe Kennedy supported this, you'll recall. There was a letter from Joe and a letter from Chris Corkin talking about the direct result when young people can't read at the grade level that they need to be at to move on into education. And Joe's told us a couple of times about crises that he thinks are building, emergencies that are coming. And this is one of them. It will directly result in our crime and in law enforcement costs and human capital. The tragedy that people are gonna suffer because innocent kiddos are caught up in this pandemic and the recovery of it. And this is beyond their capability. You gotta think about that eight-year-old who, whatever circumstances, is not reading at the grade level through lack of direct instruction, whatever the circumstance. I'm not blaming that child's future upon the parent directly. This is uh this is, whatever this is gonna be, Harley, and I don't know what this is. It's yet to be determined. This is an attempt to try to fix that, to try to be proactive now about what the future kind of, hopefully, we can avoid this dire situation. But that's why I think it does belong with us. It belongs with a lot of groups and a lot of people, that it needs to be a community-wide response. So, I mean, it's directly relates to where we're gonna be. What are the increased costs gonna be? We completely fund the criminal justice department. That's all on us. That's county attorneys. That's jail. That's all on us. So taxpayers, all of that. And that doesn't even get to, you know, we funded the the medication-assisted treatment for opioids. We've funded substance use disorder with um Operation Empower. Well, they're future people. Those future participants is the eight-year-old right now who can't read. That's who's gonna grow up and be there if we don't try to intervene. So there you go. That's, you know, the reason I'm a Democrat, I guess, is because I really think it's so important to try to be engaged in something that's holistic. So I think this is a missed opportunity.
I support every word you said, and I would love to take that to the Western View Community School District, the Dubuque Community School District, the City of Dubuque, and get their funding and buy-in.
And that's what I'm asking you. I'm a- I am actually asking you, if you keep this alive, we can have the time to bring those people into the room. In fact, that's what I'm asking, is to not have it be a dash. What is it? Yet to be determined? More information needed?
I mean, I've been, it's been, it's been around since September and not one of those board members from Western Dubuque or Dubuque, nor did I ask them, nor did they get recommended, called me or said how important this was. Not one city council member did either or the city manager or the assistant city manager or the economic development director or the Greater Dubuque Development Director. So if it's so important in the community, you know, where is everyone? And I I just feel that the county, I mean, obviously, everyone wants children to read. Everyone wants to have that outcome. But we do have to make priorities and decisions related to our, what our responsibilities are and what our overall core competencies are. And I don't see this as one to fund, unfortunately.
I I understand that you are, I understand that you don't see this, Jay. I understand that. But to Harley and your knowledge of law enforcement, I still think that there's something here we should be working on. Joe's asked us to look at this. Chris Corkin's asked us to look at this. Other partners have asked us to help them with this. And I think that it's owed more than whether it's a number, it's a a placeholder number. It shouldn't be a dash when we're getting ready to wrap up our first session on this and saying we did good work and it's gonna take time. And we're leaving that community-wide gap left with just a nothing. That's not right. If we're gonna be zeros, then let's do that and be done with it. But I think there's a, there's certainly work to be done, and I'm asking for the opportunity to continue to develop that.
And I don't have a problem with them moving forward. I think what the Community Foundation is running into is over overpromising and underdelivering. They they're getting involved in too much stuff. The ECR, Essential Region stuff, there is The ECR, Essential Region stuff, there's. A lot of things on there that are supposed to be getting done and there hasn't been very much of it done. That's kind of been following a little bit. They were supposed to have the survey out quite a while ago and I mentioned it not too long ago in chambers and it didn't take them too long and all of a sudden they had it out.
So it went up, it went up for RFP, they had to hire a consultant, which they did. It's in today's paper.
All of a sudden start moving once you kind of, you know, prod them a little bit, then all of a sudden things start moving. You know, I think they're getting, they got so many things going on, they're getting backlog. And I don't, you, a big corporation or a big foundation can fail. And the more they put in, the more chances they could have a failing too. So putting more on them, are we setting them up for a failure? I don't know. It's not dead, I'm willing to fund it. To a certain extent, because I know it's a needed.
Can we put a placeholder in there of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars? That was Nancy's number.
That's fine, you can put that in there for now, but the schools have to jump on board here. It's not only reading. They don't teach the kids how to write in cursive anymore. I learned that in third grade and now they can't teach them. Well, all the way through high school, they can't teach a child to read, right?
I hope the board remembers this. So, you know, we've spent a lot of time, we've done a, brought them back. The Community Foundation back for the second time. No one else got that invite. And then we went to a second time to this. So I hope the board will give same consideration when one of us has another passionate project. That we're just going to keep drilling until they finally get a number in there and now the number's four fifty. And so hopefully, as we go through other applications, we have the same, same considerations.
We are a lo- we are a long way, Jay, when you're a zero. I am a long way. From getting any books in any kiddo's hands and anybody on an RT, RTA books.
Aren't you looking at the screen? It's got four and fifty thousand, you and Supervisor Potoff agreed on that after.
Placeholder is all I.
Yes, I heard what.
I'm just asking for, when there's future, the future discussion, that I'm given a little more leeway, like Supervisor McDonough did, to. To basically build this case multiple times to get a yes.
I have never taken any of your requests off the agenda. So you feel free to invite anyone you would like and I heard exactly what Supervisor Potoff said about this being a placeholder. And I've listened to everything you've said, Harley, and I'll see what we can get accomplished to earn your trust in this project.
And if you want mine, get the other colleagues that have more money than us. The Community Foundation has a hundred million dollar endowment. The City of Dubuque, all the school districts have more money than we do in American Rescue Funds and this is the core of what they do. We have sixty, ninety million dollars of of requests.
Sixty million.
And, you know, it's great stuff. It's just not what the county's charter is.
And like I said, I'm disappointed in the school system when I have sixteen-year-olds coming into the feed store. And they have to print their name because they're not taught how to write cursive in school. It's like, are you kidding me? What are we doing in our schools that we can't teach a kid to write? And it's not that he doesn't learn it, they don't teach it. When I was in third grade, we learned how to write cursive. They don't even teach it, they teach them out of print, that's it.
There's a long list of educational stuff we could chat about. How much time you got?
I'd be ready to go because I got a dentist appointment at two o'clock.
Oh, from, from out of the fire, geez. The pain into the fire. Are we completed with our work?
Uh, it's everything we had on the agenda.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yeah, the motion second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Anne.